The meeting will be conducted in person and remotely over Zoom. Attendants by the planning board may be in person or remote, as you can see, and both types of attendance shall count toward quorum. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded on ECAP. To use Zoom, you'll need the link on the agenda or download the Zoom application. There's instructions on webinar ID, et cetera, on the website. All board members or commissioners and applicants will be on video and audio. Public participants invited to speak by the chair will be in person, on video, and/or on audio. Public participants joining by Zoom will be muted. No video feed from them. Public lines will be muted throughout the meeting to allow the board to conduct business and eliminate background voice. For general meetings, not hearings, and for items under which the chair solicits public comment, members of the public participating in the Zoom meeting may submit a written question via text chat, provided they include their full name and address. For the record, you may also submit questions in writing via email to dped@easton.ma.us. Chair reserves the right to respond to questions during the live meeting. Any questions not addressed in the meeting may be answered afterwards via email and will be incorporated into the minutes. All votes will be by roll call. For public hearings during the public testimony portion of the meeting, members of the public joining via Zoom may be recognized by using the raise hand function found under Participants from Zoom, or make a request with the Q&amp;A function. If you're joining by phone, you can press *9. When stating testimony, please state your name and address for the record, and please keep your testimony to a specific point of the hearing. When all business indicated on the agenda has been completed, the members will vote to adjourn the meeting, signaling the end of the meeting. At this time, I will conduct a roll call to make sure we have a quorum. Wolf?
Present.
Katam, I think you said is not present?
Correct.
Weeks?
Here.
Kid?
Present.
And Zigmond?
Present.
And Stetson, as you can tell, is present as well. So we'll start. The first couple are a couple of continuances, so we'll get through those quickly. The first is a site plan review, 642, 644 Turnpike Street. This is a request to continue to December 17.
Motion to continue 642 to 644 Turnpike Street to December 17. Wolf?
Second, Kid.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Wolf?
Aye.
Weeks?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
Zigmond?
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well. The next one is a continued public hearing for 154 Elm Street. This is also a request to continue to our December 17 meeting.
Motion to continue 154 Elm Street to December 17. Wolf?
Second, Kid.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Kid?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Weeks?
Aye.
Zigmond?
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well. The last continuance is 612 Washington Street. This is also a request to continue to December 17.
Motion to continue 612 Washington Street to December 17. Wolf?
Second, Kid.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Weeks?
Aye.
Zigmond?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well. Now, Stephanie, the next one, we were trying to take that out of order for Eric Díaz.
Yes, is Eric? Would you promote him, please? Thank you, Suzanne.
And is this 690 Depot?
No, this is 95 Union Street.
Ah, got it. Okay.
It's the A&R.
It's the A&R. Okay, great. Okay, so we're taking the A&R plan for 95 Union Street out of order. We have Mr. Díaz presenting. The floor is yours, sir.
Very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for taking me out of order. I really do appreciate it. It helps me get to another cab later this evening. Before the record, Eric Díaz, registered professional with Strongpoint Engineering, representing Garkon Corp. for a proposed A&R and a special permit for an estate lot at 95 Union. If I see on my screen, I'll be glad to just walk through this very briefly. And I think... If everybody can see the screen, let me make this larger. This lot that you see here, this very large lot that fronts on Winterberry Lane, is 95 Union Street. This is a portion of what used to be, I believe it was Benson Foundry. The Brockton Town is basically right over here. And Winterberry Lane was approved, I want to say circa 2001 or so.
No, 2008, '09.
2008. Okay, great. It was approved as a comprehensive permit. So the intention of this plan is to create four single-family lots. This area that you see, I'm going to zoom in because I'm sure you can't see it where you are. This area that you see, a portion of 95 Union that fronts on Winterberry Lane, there are no is on either side of the road in this location. The opposite side of the road from where we are is pretty much complete. And this side of the road is the subject parcel that used to be a part of the Benson Foundry. So the intention is to create four single-family lots, three of which would be tritots per zoning, and one of which would be this large estate lot in the back. A special permit. We submitted this as an A&R plan with a request for the special permit with the thought as follows, that these lots meet the requirements of lot area, frontage on a way, and access. And therefore, we thought that it could be approved as an A&R plan. Now, there's been some discussion. I've spoken with Stephanie. I've read the staff report. There's a concern that because Winterberry was approved as part of a comprehensive permit, entirely of a comprehensive permit, there's language written into the decision that said there basically shall be no further modification to the subdivision without a vote of the planning board. And it does in the decision say that it was intended for 44 units, and four more single-family. Put this at 48. In my mind, this is a very unique case. I have not run into this before. I don't know many people who have. Certainly does, on purpose, meet the requirements of an A&R, save that portion of the Winterberry Lane decision. So we wanted to proceed tonight. I know the board is at a point where they're probably running out of time on the clock and need to make some sort of a decision. So we wanted to appear. We wanted to discuss it and determine where we go from here. So that's all I have as far as presentation goes. Glad to turn it back over, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I appreciate that. And as you know from the staff report, Stephanie and I did have a call with town council on this. And for the benefit of the board members, town council is of the opinion that the case law, as well as the decision, supports that a modification, as opposed to a traditional A&R, is warranted here. I candidly am not sure. Well, and just in terms of some additional background there, on the case law, the whole purpose of the subdivision control law and the, I guess, the comprehensive permit as well, is to run the roadway through essentially stormwater, a public process, so that people could provide comment and things are done sort of out in the open. And the restrictions that Eric mentioned were built into that decision for that purpose, to make sure that in the event that something changed on this development going forward, that there would be a public process to accommodate that change or not. It is a tricky one, and I agree with the characterization that it's unique in a lot of ways because this parcel that is being proposed to be carved up is not actually part of the development itself. And so, you know, I can kind of see both sides of the argument. I can see the proponent's side. He's saying, well, this does meet all the requirements for a typical A&R and estate lot analysis. However, I do also understand what a town council's point is, which is, in a different scenario, one might imagine how this could be abused by a proponent of a subdivision, or as here, a 40B. I know that's not what's happening here, which is why there's some hesitance on my mind in terms of what to do here. So before I turn it over to the board, I have one question to you, Mr. Díaz. Does the proponent have any problem with submitting this as a subdivision modification to us?
I wouldn't. I don't believe the proponent has a problem. I would say that the larger concern is a higher level of engineering, I am in a longer timeline, and, well, really just those two things. So again, I share a lot of your thoughts. I'm kind of, you know, I'm an attorney. I'm not going to die on this hill one way or another, to be honest with you. I can see this both ways as well. So again, we just wanted to kind of bring it to the table and talk about it, and whatever the board feels is best is the way we're going to go.
Well, in terms of the engineering, can I ask? I mean, other than stormwater, I mean, because you'd be looking for a bunch of waivers, I assume.
Actually, we wouldn't be looking for many waivers. The biggest component of it would be stormwater. We would simply have to go as far as design lots now, as opposed to once we have lots that have been created through an A&R, right? Our task to get this approved as a subdivision modification would basically be to illustrate that whatever we're proposing to build on these four lots have any negative impact on Winterberry Lane or the abutters, and that roadway is sufficient to support this addition.
All right. I do want to turn it over to board members for questions and comments. But Stephanie, did I miss anything here? Do you have anything else to add?
No, I don't think you did. But I would like to just add a couple of things. When Mr. Díaz said that they wouldn't need any waivers, really what they would be looking for are the waivers to the roadway standards if you came in for a modification of subdivision. And those have already been granted through the comprehensive permit. So the board could ask just to ensure that the stormwater was not management, as Eric was pointing out, had not been affected. The other question that I would have, and I think this is one that is worth considering, is was it the intent of the developer that these parcels would participate in the homeowners' association that is responsible for the ongoing repair and maintenance of the roadway?
If I may speak to that, Mr. Chairman? My understanding from the current owner is that he has been in communication with the homeowners' association. They understand that this may very well be coming, and it would be separate from the association. And they don't seem to have an issue with this, provided that it's not something that ever becomes much more dense. Now, again, I'm paraphrasing that. I don't have that in writing. I can certainly request a letter to the board if that helps strengthen anything. But that is my understanding at this time.
Yeah. And I would just go on record as saying, I think that's something that the board should take into consideration.
Well, yeah, because that's not something that we can enforce through the A&R process. We would need to draft that into a modification. Okay, so, board members, what do we think? You know, I'll be honest with you. I could see both sides of this. I think that, you know, on the one hand, if we recommend the modification route, the advantage there is that, you know, it's all out in the open. And to the extent somebody has an issue with it, that can be vetted. But I can see the other side of it too, as I said. So the floor is yours.
I can also, I was just say, see both sides of it, and that I can appreciate the desire to kind of have the process move. I know that we, as a board, have talked about what we can do to kind of make the entire process a little bit easier. However, I do value transparency. And I think particularly as a board, we want to be sure to be as transparent as possible with the public, particularly when some of the decisions we make may not be as easily explained in like a soundbite, if that makes sense.
Other board members?
So basically, I'm equivocating. Sorry.
I am too. So I understand where you're coming from.
I guess I'll just add to that. I think, to me, I do also, as others, see both sides to this. But I do feel like, just based on some of the language in the permit and the fact that this is off of Winterberry Lane, and these new lots won't be part of the HOA, it doesn't seem right now. It's almost a separate project. And I feel like the public should be given an opportunity to hear that out and have feedback on it. It also bought, you know, conservation land. So I kind of feel like that direction I'm kind of leaning towards, just for those reasons. But I could swing either way, depending on how others feel as well. It's not very helpful, I know.
Kathy, Alan?
I mean, when I first looked at it, it did not look as simple as an A&R, but that's just my, you know, 20,000-foot view of it.
Yeah, I mean, I think I'd go with what Joanna said. I mean, I think I would lean towards the modification.
Do we, and I know this is unusual for an A&R, but do we have anyone in the room that is here to comment on this?
Do we have anyone in the queue? I don't think we have anyone in the audience.
And no one in the queue?
Well, chat with Bill and ask if he's... Okay, yeah. I don't think there are, but there aren't any members from the homeowners' association.
And they would have all received notice of this, right, Stephanie?
No, because it's an A&R. You wouldn't...
Because it's an A&R.
...see the implication.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I have had some communications with one of the folks that live there. And they're not necessarily against this, but their concerns are on the impact of the new development on the roadway and, again, the ongoing maintenance and repair.
I mean, I just, you know, I kind of think that this is, this issue is going to come up on some level if somebody's aggrieved. And I think that that, you know, I'm very sensitive to the timing aspects of things. And I just, I worry that, you know, if we put this all on the building inspector or someone else, that, you know, it's just going to delay the process even longer down the road. Whereas if we kind of just go for the modification, inject some sunlight into this scenario, I mean, I don't think you've got a board that's against this idea at all. I haven't heard that. And, I mean, I just think we're all uncomfortable with kind of the novelty of what we're dealing with. So if I'm hearing, I mean, look, we'll... I don't exactly know even how to do this because it's an A&R. I mean, what do we even do?
Well, when I talked to Jay initially, the board would vote to not endorse the plan. Before we do, Mr. Humphrey is... Does Bill have his hand raised? He is not in a butter. He is not a resident in Winterberry Hill. And he's here for another, but he does have his hand raised. If the chair... If the chair would like to...
Sure. I mean, I, you know, I solicited opinions, so not sure what his interest would be in it, but...
Sometimes it's delayed in the panelists.
Guys, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you, sir.
Okay. This is very important, what I have to say about this. Very important. So I'm the developer of the subdivision, as you well know. So I want to make you aware of what happened between me and Wayne Benson, Sr. on the purchase of his property, which I bought because we had a wetlands issue. So we bought part of his property to move our roadway away from the wetland. And we agreed with Wayne Benson that he would have a right-of-way, a driveway access to get to his father's... He has like a campground out in the distance to get there. So we gave him permission for a driveway, not for a subdivision, not for three or four lots, none of that. And I am boiling that this guy, Wayne Benson, Jr., is coming before trying to get three or four lots in there. We gave him the right for a driveway to get to his father's cabin or vacation little thing that he has out there in the woods. That's what we gave him for, not to egress three or four houses into this subdivision that I created. And furthermore, him coming in there, they went and cleared the land within 100 feet of the wetland without going before Concom, which I don't know how they get away with that. I don't get away with that. I've been in town for 42 years building. I would get, I'd be in jail if I pulled that off. But obviously, they can pull this off. And they went and put in a roadway to get out there to do work. They never came before the town. And I'm livid over this stuff what they're trying to pull on my subdivision. That, we have paperwork saying that his only right was to put a roadway in to egress, not to put in a bunch of houses, but to get out there to get to that camp that they have out there. And I will get you that paperwork to show you that this is not the intent that we had with his father. So I have, I am very upset of what this guy's trying to pull.
Wolf? Thank you for your comments. I mean, I have to say that those comments are kind of one reason why I think we, I think we're all of the opinion that this should be subject to at least some public process. And if there are some documents that are going to impact our analysis on this, I think we ought to, I think we ought to see them in order to vet this. So, you know, I do take the developers' comments to heart because I think that's an important part of understanding this process. So I think, you know, I'll defer to others. But, you know, my thinking on this is I think we ought to vote not to endorse and to recommend that they come back with a proposed modification to subdivision.
Sheriff M.A., can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Does it matter that it's a private road in terms of A&R review? I was under the impression A&R reviews work for public roads, but I guess for private roads as well? I just wanted to check that. So it's for both?
I mean, Stephanie, you can answer, but yeah.
Yeah. So basically, a private road that provides access to somewhere is considered... It's not considered a public, it's considered a public road. A private road just means that the town doesn't maintain it, and it's maintained by the homeowners. I had talked with Jay about this when there was some rankling going on with some folks in another subdivision because people who lived outside of the subdivision were coming in and walking their dogs, and their kids were riding their bikes, and they felt that they could restrict them because it's a private road. And you have to provide access to the public.
But the owners of the private road, do they need to provide permission for these houses to have access to this public road if they're the private owners of the road?
I do not believe so.
No.
Can I add one more thing to this, guys? I want you to think about this. Don't you think of all the thousands of homes I've built, don't you think I would have tried to get that property to be part of this to pick up more house lots? Don't you think I'm smart enough to have done that? I tried this, guys. I already went through this, and I already talked to the town about this and got denied. That's why I just gave them access to this. Because I would have bought the land off of Benson.
All right. Bill, I'm going to cut you off here because, you know, sometimes when you've won the battle, you know, it's time to move on.
All right.
And we do have a longer, we do have a longer meeting tonight.
I know.
But I think, no, 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 I appreciate it. And if you could just hit mute for a couple of minutes, I know you're going to be back. But I do think Bill's, I think Bill's point is well taken. And that's one of the reasons, I think, that town council, you know, had made the recommendation that he made out of... And I read some of the cases. And there is a general concern about developers subverting the process by, you know, going to the town with one development and then trying to add on to it later on through the A&R. So I think the, you know, I'm not suggesting one way or the other how I feel about this proposal. I mean, I think I'm generally supportive of it if it doesn't, you know, create major problems for the neighbors. But I think Bill's points are well taken, and I think we ought to, I think we ought to vote not to endorse and recommend that they come back.
I think...
All right.
We should do a motion on that, I think.
In the interest of transparency, I'd like to motion that the board not approve 95 Union Street plan.
Second, Kid.
Mr. Chairman, may I just?
Did I not do that right? I'm sorry.
Not, it would be not to endorse.
Not to endorse, sorry.
Just to be...
Yep, so that's just an amendment.
Particularly particular in this case.
Yep, okay. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Weeks?
Aye.
Zigmond?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well.
Great. Well, thank you very much for your consideration. Very thoughtful. And I know, again, this is a very unusual case. So we will regroup, and we'll be back with something at some point, I'm sure.
We'll see you again soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Take care.
Okay, so going back, let's see where we are.
Okay, Weber Farm?
Okay, yep. Let's do Weber Farm architectural plans, lots 10 and 6.
So Suzanne, you have Jim Donato? No, is he on Zoom?
Um, hold on a minute.
All right. Then maybe we go with, what, 6? Your line, 6? So they're two different builders, Bob, and I'm sorry, I don't remember.
Mike Peterson.
Okay, Mike Peterson.
Welcome.
Thank you.
If you could come up to the microphone. Or Suzanne, is Mr. Peterson going to present his...
Yeah, Mike Peterson, 10 Rainbow Circle.
Okay.
Thank you. Suzanne, are you pulling up the design?
Um, no.
Are you able to?
I'm not sure.
I thought you, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought that both applicants were going to...
All right. Mike has, he's going to pass something out.
Okay, that's fine. I can look at it on my computer.
You can define the queue.
Okay.
So can I just add? So I've not built in Weber Farm. I'm a builder, but I've not built in Weber Farm. And there's, not that I got a specific list of what you were looking for... And there's... Not that I got a specific list of what you were looking for for design. When I drove in there, I saw board and batten and tin. So I thought that was like a requirement. But I presented Stephanie with a house that had too much board on it, and she said, "No, we don't want all that." This is the plan that we're proposing. I think it fits in. What I'm looking to do, basically, I know Mr. Donato is getting... Looking for an approval too. I know the neighbors are looking to get the place built out, and I'm sure Al would like to go in there with one time and do the foundations instead of constantly going back and going back. It's been a long time. So I'm looking basically to get this through so I can get a foundation permit put in and catch up with him and sort of do this a little bit easier.
Stephanie, do you have any comments?
So I did meet with Mr. Peterson. One of the things we talked about, and I see on here that you are proposing the hardy board clavard.
Well, that's the question I ask, is vinyl allowed in there?
Because right now, all the units are hardy board and not vinyl. And again, what Mr. Peterson is proposing, he has, you know, the tin roof and some board and batten, a mix. He's showing the materials. He's got double-hung panes, it's four over four windows, the porch, which would be matched to the existing porches.
Yeah, the railings, the posts will match. They're all the same up there.
But I see... But you do have no hardy plank.
Yeah, they're all hardy plank up there. I would rather not use it, but if I have to, I have to.
I think in this subdivision in particular, and it's similar to the one you're going to hear, when Mr. Humphrey comes back for his architectural, it is the consistency with what's already constructed there.
Well, on the note, I mean, on that point, two questions. Maybe the first one's for Stephanie. This is the one where we had that issue previously about vinyl, right?
This subdivision? Well, in that instance, it was... That was the affordable unit, and the materials were very different. They were vinyl, everything else has been hardy board, and the affordable unit cannot look substantially different than the other units when it's an SHI-qualified affordable unit.
Well, but that's... I guess that's my point.
Yes.
If we start allowing it on the other units, does that requirement... I don't know. Does that change? I mean, I guess...
Well, they've already re-clad that house.
Right. Well, so I think to Mr. Peterson's question, I think the answer is we are requiring hardy plank out there. I don't know. I mean, just based on what we've done previously or what my understanding is to what was done previously. And so if that's the case, then I am... This question is for Mr. Peterson. On the clapboard, on the note that I think Stephanie is referring to, it says clapboard material, I think it says TBA, one vinyl, two red cedar, three hardy plank?
Correct. That's my wish list.
Okay, that's how I interpreted it as well. I just wanted to make sure I understood the note. So I think, Stephanie, he's not writing...
Okay, I see, yep.
I think it's... I think he's open to it as his third choice, and I understand why. So I guess I need maybe clarity, Stephanie, as to whether or not this is a requirement. Because if it is, I mean, I think based on what we had talked about before with the affordable unit, it has to be.
Right.
Then I think we're going to have to require hardy board here.
Specifically, the name "hardy board" as opposed to a clapboard-type siding?
I mean, I think a clapboard siding would be fine. That's my...
It's the look that...
Well, that brings...
It's the look, that's right.
That brings in the vinyl. The only difference with the hardy plank is you might be able to get it at five inches to the weather, and it might look a little broader than a cedar. A red cedar would probably be about four and a quarter inches to the weather. I don't know if that makes a difference to the board or not.
Well, let me throw it out to the board and see what they think.
So there was a house already required here to use hardy board specifically by name, not just a certain style or look, but actually said "hardy board"?
Well, so my understanding is hardy board, there are other... So hardy board is a brand name. It's... My understanding is it's a composite clavard, and it's not a vinyl clavard, it's a composite clavard. And it is supposed to last longer, it doesn't require painting similar to the vinyl, and it has... It looks more like a wood clavard. My understanding is there are other products, other brands of that composite board, but I'm not a builder or developer.
Well, the advantages to a hardy board, one, is it's a sand, and it's more of a masonry-type product. To work with it, it is carcinogenic, that's one thing. And you have to leave spaces, and there's a lot of caulking involved, and it's a different process to put up than, say, would be a traditional red cedar, which is more like working with wood. My preference personally would be vinyl. Why? Because I know I'm going to be doing it, and I'd rather work with that. So that's a question to the board, is it specifically hardy plank, or can you use a vinyl, or can you use a different product? And if the answer's no, you know, we can go with the hardy plank. I'm only throwing it out as a question.
And Bob, if I could just... Want another comment?
Yeah.
So, and again, I'm just communicating back what the intent of the board... My understanding of the intent of the board at the time was that this was to have a certain look and a certain feel. And I don't know that hardy board was required. I think I checked it in the decision when I met with Mr. Peterson. It wasn't specifically called out there. I think it was that that was what was presented, and then every house thereafter, that was the material that was being proposed.
So I think what I'm hearing is we've got some discretion here. I'm just in... You know, I'm not a builder either, and I'm sort of loathe to take that decision-making process out of the builder's hands. But knowing that we required a change on the affordable because, you know, all of the other units in this development had something that at least looked like hardy board, you know, it would seem to me to be a little bit against the... At least the spirit of the decision to kind of allow something different now. I mean, that's my two cents, but again, I'm one person, and...
So that affordable property does not have vinyl then, correct? It has some sort of...
It has hardy board, yes.
Okay, so if that's the case, I think we should require this property to use some sort of fiber cement board. It doesn't have to be the hardy brand, I don't think, but as long as it's a fiber cement board, presumably, they're all, you know, competitive with one another, and therefore should be fair with the previous house that's been required to do that.
And just saying, on all the other facets, all the detail, the corner boards, you're not requiring PVC, right? I mean, you're not... I mean, you're looking for a look. I'm only questioning what particular do you have to use as a product to make that look? And does it have to be? I mean, you know, like I say, once you put a coat of paint on it, you can't tell the difference.
Would that depend to the look over time? Like, as the product ages over time, do they age differently? I mean, you can say everything might look the same when you first make it new, but after five years of wind, of New England winters, are they still going to weather the same? I think that would be my question, is five years out, eight years out, is it all of a sudden going to be very obvious that one was made with a very different material than the other ones that have been created?
Well, I've been doing it a long time, and manufacturers make a lot of promises, and they'll tell you this lasts 50 years, but nothing lasts 50 years. So it will fade, and you will have to paint it like everyone else, because that's what you do when you put it up. You put it up, and then you paint it. Well, you're painting it with the same type of thing, so...
My question is, will it fade or chip or whatever at a different rate than the other materials?
I can't answer that. I don't believe it. Well, I have red cedar on my house, and it's been there for 35 years. I was working on it today. It's as good as the day it went up, so I can't answer the question, what's going to happen there.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
When you're saying red cedar, are you talking about a clavard?
Clapboard.
Okay.
A material.
Okay, so...
It's a clapboard made out of red cedar rather than hardy plank.
Right, because my...
It's wood.
I was thinking...
With hardy plank, I'm just saying, with hardy plank, it's not beveled like a red cedar. In other words, it might be 7/16th, and it's 7/16th all the way through. So it's like putting square pieces of board together. So it sticks out further. It's a different process for working. Whether it's any better or not, it's much more difficult to work with. That's all. Like trying to build a deck with PVC. You pick up a 16-foot or a 20-foot piece of... It just droops. I mean, it does... There's no integrity to it. It's great once... It's like buying IKEA. Once you get it together, it's great, but that's... You get one shot at it. To me, I'm an old guy, and wood's a little easier for me to work with. I'm more used to it. That's really...
So again, I'm sorry, Bob. I thought he was talking about like a cedar shingle, but he's talking clavard, and it's wood.
Yeah, no, I'm looking to conform to the neighborhood, believe me. You will not tell the difference when you... Unless you go up, you won't tell the difference in the street.
I guess my challenge there on that point is, like, if it's just the look that we're after, there are some really great vinyl products as well that look great from the street. And unless you know, you know, architecture in detail and notice differences, most passersby won't even notice that it's vinyl compared to either wood or some sort of cement fiber composite. So I think this is kind of a slippery slope. I still feel like if there's a house in this area that was required to use the fiber cement, then that's what we should be requiring for this house. Otherwise, it's just not fair to the other developer.
Other board members?
Are we after a look? Because I think I'm looking at some pictures of the houses, and some of them have clapboards, some of them have board and batten, some of them have... So I don't think there's a required architectural style for the shingle, because the houses all... They don't all look the same.
Yeah, I think... Unless you go up and touch it, you will not know the difference. But that's my question to the board, basically, is that.
Yeah, I mean, look, I... This is what I started with. I sort of don't want to step on the developer's toes. He has an interest in making this look nice and look in the neighborhood. But my only issue, and I raised it just for everybody's consideration, is the affordable. As we went through this issue, I don't remember when it was, but I know we went through it, and, you know, whoever was doing that house went back and made some changes. So, you know, it is more of a fairness issue in my mind, as Joanne mentioned. You know, I take Mr. Peterson's word for it when he tells me he's going to make it look the same. I just don't, you know, I don't have any way to evaluate it other than what I've explained. So I mean, unless others have a question, I think we should, you know, either prove it or not.
Bob, do you want to hear from someone? I have someone hand raising in the public room.
Okay, sure. Mr. Conlin, if you could unmute yourself and then introduce yourself?
My name is Leo Conlin, and I'm with a butter at Matthew Circle. And my concern is that we really need to have all the houses conform to the same material that's here. How can you have one out of 14 houses have a different facade? It was also, as you spoke earlier, it was insisted that the affordable house have hardy board, and now you want to change it to something that just doesn't conform to the rest of the neighborhood. That's my concern.
Mr. Chair, if I could speak to that again, because I appreciate everyone's concerns, and I heard you kind of acknowledge this. The thing with the affordable unit was that the siding was vinyl siding. It didn't look to be the highest quality, and it didn't have the same architectural details that the other homes had. And it really stood out. It was very obviously different and not of the same high quality as the others were. And from a fair housing standpoint and the requirements for subsidized housing, affordable housing to qualify as subsidized housing so that we can count it towards the 10% affordable housing inventory, it cannot look visibly different than... Discernably different than the others, meaning that you would look at that and go, "Oh, gee, that house wasn't built to quite the same standards as the other."
So I know, and I appreciate that. I guess I don't know how, like, if Mr. Peterson is saying he can achieve this look with vinyl, I'm not in a position to say I disagree with you, but we can't come up with a spec sheet, you know, on the spot tonight. So what's the best option that we have? I mean, are you comfortable in saying, you know, red cedar or hardy plank? Is that something that we feel comfortable is going to help achieve that look, Stephanie?
I'm saying it sounds like it could, but again, I'm not an expert. And again, it depends on the materials when they're actually purchased and the quality of the material.
Yeah, right. No, I get it.
That's...
All right, so board members, what do we think? He's got three choices up here. He said he's willing to do any of them. He's explained his preferences to us. What do we think?
I will say, I am inclined to go with any of the three, but I'm wondering if you can bring us back just a little bit more detail? Like, is it possible to come back the next time and show some additional level of detail when you say the vinyl will match and look just the same? Can you... This is going to... It's hard to see kind of like what we're looking at on the screen, the Google Maps, not that you have to Photoshop a picture. But can you provide additional detail?
I can. I can do that. Again, I'm open. I know I don't want to stick out like the other one did. And in putting this house together and trying to fit different prices and sizes and whatnot, I do have a customer, and they have a level of where they want to go. And if I can juggle things around and give them more here and there, that's kind of why I'm here. If we have to fit in with it, like I said, we'll deal with it. I was really looking more to see what the board felt about using a different product. I don't want to be the only one in the neighborhood that's not looking like anyone else either, so...
And I think what you're hearing tonight, Mr. Peterson, is that's all we're, you know, sensitive to as well. So I think that makes sense. If you can come back and just show us that the materials you want are going to fit in, I think you've got a receptive board.
Yeah, well, we do that. I think we can leave it at that, and then we can do that. Just... Just a question too. So ordinarily, when you go for a building permit, the planning board does sign off, but most of the times there's no jurisdiction or they don't have a big jurisdiction. Here apparently they do. If I was going for a foundation permit from the building inspector, is they going to require something from the planning board in order to go ahead with that portion of the construction? Because I mean, putting the foundation in is one thing. You know, whether we clad it and whatever, we clad it is something different. That's kind of my.
Do you know the answer to that question?
I do. And, and in fact, I noticed you, you actually need to submit a plan, a site plan to show the foundation and everything. That, that foundation could be approved based on the style and the footprint of the house. It's, it's not, that's one of the things that when the board is approving the style, the architectural style, which they can do when it's a special permit, which is what this subdivision was approved under, then, then we sign off on it and we match it to what the massing was, the site plan. So that, that can be signed off and it could be signed off with a stipulation that the material, the siding material. And, and you'd need to submit the design as well. But that needs to have all the materials shown on it when you submit that to the building department.
All right, so we'll just leave it there and I'll get back in touch with you and for anything new that you might want to look at as far as those materials.
Well, it's right there.
So the board's next meeting is on the 17th of December.
December?
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. We'll see you then.
Thank you.
I think that's been up for a while. I, I think he's just, he's next.
Great, thank you.
Hello?
All right. Next up is.
Suzanne, could you please remove the Conlins from that?
All right. Next up is Old Forge Commons Architectural Plans for lots.
We have, we, we still have, I'm sorry, lot 10.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Bill.
They thought.
Do we have someone? Mr. Conlin, could you please mute yourself or click off the screen? Okay, so do we, but do we have someone for lot 10?
I don't, I don't think so, but the board has the plan in the binder.
Yeah. I, did, did you, but there's no. Oh, all right. Well, this is a more detailed plan than the other one.
Right. And I believe the materials were shown on this. This is.
What I'm looking for.
This is Mr. Donato and he has construct, he constructed and then re-sided the affordable unit and he's constructed one other unit that came before the board.
Okay.
I think it's on, is it on the first?
It's on the first, the first one is on the left?
Oh, there it is. Okay. All right. Board members, any comments, questions, motions?
Or, you know, I'm looking at bills.
Go ahead, Mickey.
I was waiting. I was going to say motion to approve, but I didn't know Stephanie had a comment or?
No, I was looking at the wrong.
I was pausing that first step for you. Motion to approve Weber Farm Architectural Plan Lot 10.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Weeks?
Aye.
Kid? Wolf? Zigman?
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well. All right. Thank you for your patience, Bill. You are up next. This is Old Forge Commons Architectural Plans for lots one and four. As I've been doing the whole time for this, I'm, I'm going to just recuse myself again and I'll leave it to Mickey Wolf. Thank you.
Mr. Stenson, before you recuse yourself, I had my hand up for about 10 minutes for that last meeting and you guys wouldn't bring me on board. And why is that?
I actually thought that that was a mis, I thought it was a mistake.
It wasn't a mistake. I just wanted to give my input. I've been building in the town for 42 years and I want to give my input on hardy plank and certain teed and the other products that are out there. Building over 1,200 houses, I wanted to give the town some input on what siding is about. And I thought I would help out there, but obviously you didn't want to hear it from me, so I'm sorry. But let's go to my meeting.
All right, moving on. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Humphries. You are up. If you wanted to discuss the first architectural plan for lot one.
So I was asked today to go over the, more of the site plan, not the architecturals. Is that correct, Stephanie?
Well, the board needs to vote on the architecturals and, and I indicated that, so.
Okay, okay. So lot one was the, was already voted on. That was lot. So on lot number four, the plan that I was going to bill on lot four has already been approved and I'm moving it over to lot one because lot four, a gentleman wants to build on lot four and he wants to build the house that was already approved on lot 12. So both the, the house plans have been already approved. I'm just switching around. So again, I know it's confusing, but so lot four is going to be built, that has already been approved, is being built on lot one. And lot 12 is going to be the same exact house plan, garage is everything on, on both plans exactly, is going to be built on lot four.
So these specific plans have not been approved on these lots, but these, those plans have been approved on other lots?
Yes, so, yep. So the house on lot, that's going on four was approved on lot, well, not the, the lot, the house plan has been approved. I'm not going to say the lot. I'm going to say the house plan was approved. So, and also the house plan that was on, that's going to lot four was also approved. So both plans have already been approved. I'm just changing the lots on them.
Is that, I don't believe you're able to just switch the lots without getting them re-approved?
That's why I'm, that's why I'm here. That's why I'm home before you.
So, okay, so he's not changing the lot or the lot shapes?
Yeah, he's just changing, moving the houses.
What he's doing is just changing the houses. And what the board has been approving is the architectural design of the houses. So what Mr. Humphrey is saying is they've already, this is a formality that the board has already approved these two house designs in the past.
Perfect, thank you.
For this subdivision.
Thank you. Did you want to discuss, moving on to the, the site plan for lot one?
Yes, yes. So lot one, I think one of the abutters sent in a, a letter saying she had concern over it and I talked with Stephanie today about it. That's why I'm here tonight to talk about it. So do you have the lot, the site plan in front of you? Okay, so if you look at the original topography, you'll see the, so the dotted line is the original.
Just, just one moment, please, Mr. Humphries. Is it possible, we usually have folks put it up on the screen? Is it possible to put it up on the screen?
I'd have to pull it off of what I submitted to you guys. Suzanne, can you do that or no?
No.
I can.
I don't know. Let me, I don't know how to do that, what I submitted to you guys.
Do you want me to pull it up on my screen?
Yes.
Yep.
It's consistent across folks presenting.
There you go. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Stephanie.
All right, so I'm gonna, I, I can't point to a line, but if you look at the house plan in the, oh, they, oh. So where the cursor is right now, going through the, you'll see a dotted line going through the, so the front third of the house, there's a dotted line. See, yeah, there you go. So if you look at that dotted line, that elevation is 125. That's existing. So what that means is before we put the road in, before we did any site work, that's the existing grade of the topography of the land. And the solid lines that you see, you'll see solid lines going in front, beside, rear, et cetera, are the, the finished grade of the site. So lots one and two, we have the high water table down there because that's the lower side of the wa, of the lot. And you'll see the engineer has the, in the front yard, you'll see, and right in the front of the house, you'll see a arrow right where the cursor is right now. Yes, right there. See right there? You'll see a grade that says 131.00. That's the proposed grade in front of the house. So whenever you're building in a subdivision or any lot, where you, especially in a subdivision, what we're trying to do is catch all the water in the front of the house to go out to the street level. Now, if you look out in the street, you can see a finished grade on the street of the proposed grade is 130. So you'll see a zigzag yes right there. That grade is 130. So to get the water from the front of the house at 130, that's why Frank Ribeau, the design engineer, so he has 131, which is a minimal grade. It's a one foot above the road. You want the water to go out in the street to get caught by the street drainage. You do not want the water to go back towards the lot and then go past the house and onto the abutters. So you raise the grade. You want the grade in front to be higher so it'll go out in the road. So that's what Frank Ribeau has basically done. And same with the lot next to a lot two, he's done the same, same exact thing, which I can go over also. So he's got the front grade of the house on lot one at 131 and he's got the street grade at 130. So that's only a one foot difference in grade, which is mild over a 50 foot area to get the water to go out in the street. That's what you want. All the water behind the lot, which is already going behind the lot, behind the lot, he's already got going in that direction. But that's only a third of, or half of the water is still going back there. So half of the lot, water on that lot is going to the street. Before, all the water on the lot was going towards the abutters. Now only half of it is going there because it's, we're catching it in the street. So the water that's behind the house, we're not changing it. It's still going back that way. So you'll see at the elevations here, you'll see at the middle of the lot, you got elevation 125 and you see in the front of the house, elevation 131. That's a difference of six feet. Now, the reason of that is, is because the water table on that lot is at two feet. So we have to obviously raise the foundation. We can't put the foundation in the water table. We have to be two feet above the water table by building permit. That's according to the, the inspector. So the, the house has to be raised. We have to fill the front of the lot and then push, make the water go towards the street. And that's what we're doing. That's what Frank Ribeau is doing. And also on lot number two, which is approved already that we're doing, it's doing the exact same thing. So on lot number two, we have the street elevation at 131 and the front of the lot is 132. It's only one foot difference on lot number two. So we're not raising the houses up, building them way out of the ground. We're just getting the lot a foot, the grade of up enough. So it's only a foot difference so the water will go towards the street. And I know the abutters had concern on this and that's why I'm here at this meeting tonight, but they're minimal grades and we're trying to get the water in front of the houses to go out the street and that's the intent. And also on lot number four, same thing. We're only a foot out of the ground to make the water go out in the street. Behind the lot, the water's still going towards the back of the lot, just how it is planned. We're not doing anything different. So half of the water in the lot is going to the street, which is that, that's what you want to do. But behind the house, you can't change the water direction. If it's going in that direction, it's going to continue going in that direction.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Humphries. Stephanie, did you have any comment?
No.
Okay. Would this be the time to read in the, or other board members? I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, I'll be doing board members and I'm going to kick it out to the public, I promise. So just one moment. All right, so members of the public and do we want to do Dale first or can, do you want me to read the letters in first or do they have to be read in? Can they just be?
That's up to you.
Do not care. Can, do you want me to read them in or should, can they just be entered in?
They can be entered in.
Okay.
I, I would summarize.
I, I will read the shorter one. The other one is a little bit longer.
But I think it expresses the same concerns.
Yes, and expresses the same. Are these, yeah, these are two of them. So I'll read the shorter one, which is from Ross Greenfield, 29 South Street, to the Planning and Zoning Board. Read the Old Forge Commons Architectural Plans for lot one and lot four. Thank you very much for the opportunity to attend the meeting on November 25th to listen and discuss the design reviews for Old Forge Commons Architectural Plans. As an appreciative member of the neighborhood and concerned citizen for maintaining a home on the lot that property sits upon, I'm asking for the board to consider disapproval of plans, of the plans for lots one and lot four until there are approved drainage plans to sufficiently control and divert rainwater from entering abutting properties as well as the surrounding areas along South Street. There is a temporary drainage ditch on Old Forge Commons property that's expected to be removed before the building is deep sloped aimed in the direction of South Street and the abutting properties. And the other email is from Rachel and Jonathan Moore, kind of summarizes the same. It just does say, and I do, we just want to call this out, that we would like to remind the board we've experienced regular heavy flooding over the past two years of site work due to the surface water flowing from Old Forge Commons onto Friends' property down the South Street towards Founder Street and onto our property. And, yeah, so.
So I, I would like to respond to the, so there was, there were some problems with construction period runoff that was making its way into, and some of the runoff was bypassing the stormwater system and that was causing silt and water to flow onto a abutting property. We had Beta go out and do some inspections. They confirmed there were some issues there and made suggestions on some methods that needed to be implemented and steps that needed to be taken to control the stormwater runoff during construction period. Mr. Humphrey responded to all of those and that has been addressed and handled. Now, we are just coming, hopefully coming out of a period of drought. We had excessive rains over the last, last winter and some heavy rains the winter before and we will keep an eye on that. I appreciate people's concerns. I think that my recommendation would be that once Mr. Humphrey gets his foundation and his framing done and when he finishes the grading prior to looming and seeding and finishing his landscaping, that we have Beta go out and do an inspection and make sure that there's not going to be a significant change in the grading that would bypass the, the stormwater design as it was designed.
Do you have any members of the public? You can step up to the mic and identify yourself, please.
Dale Karister, 21 South Street. For, most of the members of the board were not actually on the board going through the permitting process on this. I just briefly want to explain a little bit of the background on this. The permitting was ultimately approved of, leaving in July 2022. Our group has not sort of Johnny come lately raising concerns after the fact. We actually addressed significant concerns about the drainage plans long before the permit was granted and we raised issues and ultimately Beta rejected the initial, I believe, first four iterations of the drainage plan required to be much more robust. Members of our group, specifically the Gaslight Condominium Trustees, actually hired a hydrologist to provide a presentation to the board and express the very concerns about drainage during construction. That, we were given assurances by the developer, by his engineer, that everything had been fine. They expressed that level of optimism on the original drainage plans that were ultimately rejected by Beta. They expressed the same optimism about during the construction period. I want to show you some pictures of what the folks in this neighborhood have been dealing with for the last year and a half. And to be clear, this is not my property. It doesn't come onto my property, but it does come onto my neighbors. It doesn't come onto my property, but it does come onto my neighbors. Initially, the water flow was coming onto the neighbors immediately on my side of the road, which is the west side of South Street. And then after we got the town engineer involved, they required the developer to drive, basically like a little trench and a little drainage ditch. And that then overflowed and caused the water to overflow onto 36 South Street, Fran Masters, and onto Jonathan and Rachel Moore's property. I just want to see what we were dealing with, so we have an understanding of why there's this level of concern and why the neighbors are asking that the board not approve this until such time as Beta has actually come in, addressed the grading, rather than having the foundation be permit, put in, and then after the fact, you know, come back and say, well, it's already in, it's sort of too late, we're, we'll deal the best we can. And I think you can, when looking at these pictures, you can understand the frustration of the neighbors with this whole process. So. Let me, let's see.
Down at the bottom, there's two hours.
Okay. So these are some pictures that were taken in December 2023. This was nearly a year after I first asked the town to have the peer review engineer came back. I look back at my emails, and I had reached out to the town in January 2023, asking the town to have the peer review engineer come in because of the concerns about the water and silt flowing from the property. What you're looking at here is looking south on South Street towards Route 106. I took that picture from approximately where Jonathan and Rachel's, one of their driveways is located. And this is another picture, just to give you an idea of the water and silt that was coming into their driveway and flooding their property. If you look here, you can see the water coming down, and then over in this area here, pooling not only in the driveway, but also in their yard as well. You can actually see, it was like a river coming down. This was not an isolated occasion. Granted, that particular date in December, there was fairly heavy rain, but this was not the only occasion. This was a repeated occurrence in, in the neighborhood. And again, you can see just the river of water, and if you look to your right, the white house there, that's Fran's at 36. She's an immediate abutter to the property. And this is what folks were coming back to on, on a regular basis. And again, before the, the initial small drainage ditch was put in, the water was flowing on the other side. So it was our neighbors Ross who's here today and submitted a letter, and also Junior and Lindsay Sanchez dealing with the very same problems. And to be clear, when we raised these issues, I, generally my approach in these things is go directly to the source and raised it directly with, with Mr. Humphrey, and it was there in front of the property along with Greg Swan, the engineer. And when I raised these issues, Mr. Humphrey claimed that the problem with the water was actually coming from the Wilsons driveway. And I'll, I'll leave it at that. You can judge that yourself. You can see just the torrent of water that was flowing down. Again, I'm moving up north on South Street towards the property, and you can see the water flowing over. This is on the right Fran's front yard. So I think you can see why the neighbors are concerned about the, the water problem here. This is where there was ultimately a small drainage ditch put in. And then after the peer review engineer came in at the request of Jonathan and Rachel Moore, which didn't happen until sometime this summer, I believe in July, certain changes were made, the most significant of which was that ditch was substantially expanded and deepened, and that's what's been capturing the water. And as everybody knows, we've had a drought over the last several months. I remain extraordinarily concerned about what's going to happen when that drainage ditch is removed as part of the work on this. I'm going to address the height issue very shortly, but you can see what, what's happened. They, the, that lot one was gradually sloping, call it from 130 feet of elevation, down to about 123, 123, as you move down towards Fran's property. Those are the existing elevations that Mr. Humphrey was pointing to. And what they've done is built it up, you know, so as much as six or seven feet in height. And now you have, instead of a gradual, you have a steep drop off. If you look at the elevation figures on the lot one plan, you'll see it's basically a hill, and it's sloping towards South Street, and it's sloping towards Fran's property. And as I understand it, when this work is going to be done, that drainage ditch is going to be removed. And these pictures, by the way, were just taken this weekend on Saturday. And you can see the water flowing down. It wasn't that heavy of a rain. We had some, some rain, but you, you have water accumulating here. And then if you look in this picture here, so they widened the drainage ditch, deepened it, and it's basically a pool back there. And you see that little red post over here? That's one of the property markers that, that I understand has been laid out by the surveyor for where the new home is going to go. That drainage ditch is going to be gone. I'm not an expert on this, but where is that water going to go? Where is that water going to go when, when that drainage ditch is gone? And, you know, I, I'm sorry, but the trust level and the confidence level is not high. We're asking the board to hold off on approving any plans for lot one until such time as Beta has had an opportunity to weigh in. I have a lot of faith in Beta. They've had two occasions where they've jumped in. First, they reviewed the initial drainage plans, rejected most of them until this was a much more robust drainage plan. And where would we be if they didn't have the larger pocket wetland that we have now? And secondly, when they came in this summer, they identified various changes to be made as part of during this construction period, but we're really concerned now what's going to happen going forward after that. And you'll hear from some of the neighbors who can speak more directly to, you know, their experience. The, the second issue I just wanted to briefly address, and I admit, I'm biased on this. I'm going to be looking out of my windows at this new home across the way. I'm fine with that. I accepted that. When I moved here in 1993, I went into the town hall, got a copy of the zoning ordinances, so I knew what might come down the pike. Somebody warned me, said, you know, these things can change over time. I fully expected this was going to be developed over a period of time, but frankly, was shocked looking at the plans for this route, this lot one, to see the elevation. So the elevations, if you look at the other homes, generally vary from about 20 to 28 or 29 feet, you know, measured from the ridge peak to the top of the foundation. And this one is approximately 28 feet in height. It is one of the highest homes in the, in the development. And on top of that, you have a one foot or one and a half foot for your, where your foundation is going to be above grade, and you have another six feet. You're getting close to about 34, 35 feet in height. This home is going to dominate this street. And I know as part of the flexible development, there's an intent to have something that's consistent with the surrounding area. It's one of the reasons why you do a flexible development. And I personally just don't think this is the place to have, you know, that, that, a house of, of that height. And I know that there was some expression, well, that somebody had desired from block four, they'd like to do something here. It seems to me that, you know, they should be doing something in a more modest height here to keep it in keeping with the other homes. And by way of example, we did some of our own measurements. My house is 24 feet, four inches. The Wilsons' house is 24, seven. The Junior and Lindsay Sanchez is likely something less than that, and we're not built up six or seven feet in height. This is going to dominate. And again, it's, I'm biased. It's really up to you guys in terms of what flexible development is and in keeping with the neighborhood. And so I'm asking that the board defer any approval of the plans until such time as Beta has actually reviewed and provided the drainage for this, to make sure it's going to be adequate. And number two, to consider requiring that something be in a more modest height be considered for this lot. Thank you very much for your time. Much appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Karister. Are there any other members of the public who should speak?
Can I rebut that, please?
We're going to wait. I'm asking for members of the public to speak right now, Mr. Humphries. You'll have a second.
But I should have the right to rebut what he just said.
You're going to have, you're going to have just a minute. I just want to see other members of the public, let them have a chance to speak, and then you can speak. Thank you.
Hello. Jonathan Moore, 541 Foundry Street.
Could you please mute, Mr. Humphries?
No, it's okay. I don't mind being lectured by a participation trophy award winner.
Sir? Please be careful.
Sorry.
Thank you. Could you please repeat, please, for the record?
Hi. Jonathan Moore, 541 Foundry Street.
Thank you.
Hi. I have had my property dumped upon by the silt coming out of Mr. Humphries' development repeatedly. It's fine that there's extra water every year. Why is there excess silt coming on my property? He is clearly, it's, they're clearly not doing enough to block the silt. Sorry. That's all. So I would really like you guys not to approve of this until you can have Beta confirm that the drainage will be adequate and not dumped onto my property. It's been very, very frustrating. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who should speak? All right. You go. Okay.
Fran, Fran Masters, 36 South Street.
Hi, welcome.
Dale Karister really said it all, and I don't know all the scientific facts about height of houses at all, but even lot two has dominated the area, and I was shocked to see how tall that one was. My daughter said to me, you should put up a privacy fence. And I said, I can't put up a privacy fence. Their basement is equal to where my house is now. That aside, we've had a lot of silt, too. I own a couple of dogs. They come in with their paws gray because they're in that, and I don't even know how healthy it is. The top of my driveway has been like a lake, and some of the pictures that Dale showed were at the end of my house and the end of my driveway. I could not get to my mailbox because the water was so deep. I would have needed knee boots or maybe a boat. So I am supporting and agreeing with what Mr. Karister said, that proper inspection and Beta approval should be done before this additional lot one is built on.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Mr. Humphries? Or I'm sorry, is someone else online? Okay.
Did you want me to talk? I'm sorry.
Just one moment. We're just trying to let, let other folks who are online speak.
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you need some help, Suzanne?
Yeah. Okay. You're welcome.
Is there just one member of the public who should speak?
If I'm unmuted, I was actually, I put my hand up for the Weber Farm and not this development. My apologies.
Okay. All right, Mr. Humphries, if you wanted to have a chance to reply, just if you could keep your reply to, let's say, three to four minutes, that would be great, because we have some other stuff on the agenda here as well tonight.
So there's quite a few things that I have to rebut, so three to four minutes isn't as clear to me, but first, let me start off with Beta. So Beta came in, the first gentleman that came in and talked said the, the drainage basins were made larger. That's, that's not true. They weren't made larger, they were raised. They were not made larger, so they were raised. The reason they were raised is because he disagreed where we said the water table was. So I had Ribeau Engineering, Hermno Engineering, and the town of Easton, who is very good at what they do at determining water table. We did 42 deep hole tests on the lot on, throughout my land, and they had the land, all the water table lower than what Beta had it is. But unfortunately, I have to deal with the town, and I have to go with what Beta did, and it took me over a year. It held me back from building my subdivision. So the road was raised, et cetera. That's passed, I'm fine with that. But just to let you know, the town of Easton agreed with Humphrey Builders, Walter Hermno, Ribeau Man surveyors, where the water table is. Just to let you know that, the town of Easton agreed with me. So the water table was down lower, so all the basins that are built, the one that's on the north side of the property, has been dry. It hasn't had an inch of water in. So it was supposed to be at a certain elevation. So I just want to put that out there. So the other thing I wanted, all the pictures that you saw, I'd like to ask the abutters when those were taken, because I know when they were. They were done back in December, January, or in February, when we had 32 inches of rainfall, is what we got in five years of time in Massachusetts. So I don't care where you live, wherever you live, that water was coming. It wasn't going to stop. So 32 inches, I, I hope the board appreciates how much rainfall 32 inches is in three months of time. So there's no way you can hold that back. So I met with Stephanie over this because the neighbors were concerned. We brought out their engineer for the town, met with them out there, and what we ended up doing is, we did things that you don't do in typical subdivisions. I've built probably 25 subdivisions in my life, and probably 15 in the town of Easton. And what we ended up doing is controlled the water, so, because a lot of the subdivision wasn't landscaped at the time. None of it was landscaped. So what we ended up doing is we created issue, created areas to contain the silt on the subdivision. The pictures that you saw was before we did this. So what we ended up doing is putting up areas of the catch basins to catch the water. We ended up putting in stone riprap all along the road, which cost tens of thousands of dollars that we did. Stephanie was out there working with me on this, with the engineer. We did all this, and we controlled it. And after that, and we also went on, and one of the neighbors said, oh, we dug a trench, and then we ended up improving on it. We met with the engineer. It was his idea to do what we did, and we ended up digging a trench there that was a temporary trench until we built on lot one. And now we're building on lot one. So we did all that to contain that, because the purpose of building a lot, the final lot, is to finish the road. So now three quarters of the subdivision is landscaped. Before, nothing was landscaped. Now three quarters of it is seeded, loomed, and the grass is grown completely. We have, again, 14 of the houses in there are completely landscaped, so there's no more silt coming off of there. We can't stop the rainwater. The rainwater's coming, and we're not going to control it until the road is completed. Now, if I can't finish the last two houses, I can't finish the road. And I have the last two lots sold, everything's sold out there. If I can't finish the lots, I cannot finish the road come this May. So the neighbors should understand that I am going as fast as possible. I built 20, I will build 20 houses in less than two years. I need to complete the road to contain the water. And the only way I can contain the water is to have the berm in that controls the water to go to the catch basins, and that's the only way. That's how it was designed. If I can't finish it, then the water will keep going. So if we don't finish the last two lots, I can't finish the road, guys. And the, one of the neighbors says the houses are higher than all the other houses. One of the neighbors said that. The lot on number two is 28 feet high. We filled the lot five feet. That's 33 feet. At least 10 of the houses in there are five feet higher than that. So I don't know where he's coming up with calculations. Maybe he is a builder and architect. He knows this, I don't know. But if you drive into the subdivision, I suggest the board, drive into the subdivision, look at this. If you want to hold this off, that's fine. If you want to delay the subdivision, fine, that's your choice. I would suggest you not to, because I want to finish this road come May, I want to be done there. But if you look at the road, we're building the houses on lot one and two the way they're supposed to be built. It's a high water table down there, and if you look at the front of the lots, the front of the lot, the foundation, you can't put a foundation in the water table, even though I'm unfortunate to say, the abutters, some of the abutters that have gone up there that I have helped out, the last abutter that was in there, I'm not going to mention her name, she had three feet of water in her, in her basement. I went over there and I put a sump pump at my cost and helped her out, and she's badmouthing me. That's fine, that's, she can do whatever she wants, but I tried to help her out. She has a fence on my property. I said, no problem. I tried to help her out. She says she has dogs walking around in the mud.
Mr. Humphries?
Maybe she did in January. Please, can I finish? This is important. You're talking a million dollar property.
This is important, I'm just giving you, I'm just giving you a little bit of a time warp, you're speaking for.
Thank you. Thank you. But it has been, there has been no water, and we've had, we just had a pretty good, we had two inches of rain yesterday, and there wasn't a drop of water with, that was dirty going down that road yesterday. And you, I'm sure you didn't get one phone call on that either, did you? No, you didn't. Did you, Stephanie? No, you didn't. So I just want to make that pointed out. The difference between 32 inches of rainfall and two inches of rainfall. So my point is, I want to finish this subdivision. They can go over there and say whatever they want, but a foundation has to be, the front of that grade has to be a foot above the ground or the or the water will run onto the abutters' property. If we lower the foundation, the water is going to go after, go towards the neighbors, the abutters. If we lower the foundation down, the water is going to go off the road and go onto the abutters. That does not make any sense. It's all designed by engineers.
Thank you, Mr. Humphries. I appreciate your comments and your rebuttal. Board members, does anybody else have any comments?
Can I have 62nd?
No, sorry. We're done with the public comment. Stephanie, any comments?
No.
Okay. Does anybody have a motion?
The motion says, I think the choices are is to ask Mr. Humphries to kind of come back or to approve this and with the condition that Beta go out after the foundation is set. I believe is what you said, Stephanie, originally. And have them evaluate that.
I mean, we could, we could ask Beta to go out now.
Okay. So those would be three options.
And then go out again after. I mean, based on whatever their observations are and suggestions or comments.
It is December, Stephanie. If I don't get them in, this project's screwed. I'm sorry, but this project's screwed.
So, sorry, Chair, if I may ask a question? So how does, how does that work? So we could have Beta go out now, and then we would continue this to the next meeting until Beta goes out and then review it again? Can you explain that process to me again, the before and after Beta?
I, my initial suggestion, after talking with Mr. Humphrey, because what my conversation with him today was that the grading would be refined after the foundation was in, if I understood correctly. And we would go out and verify that. Again, I could get Beta out there. I think they'd probably be able to get out there within the next two weeks. We're running up against holidays and weather, but they've been pretty responsive in the past. And take a look at the plans. I mean, we could have them look at the plan.
Would that give, like, for board members, would that kind of provide an extra level of assurance for folks?
I mean, then, but then the next board meeting is December 17th. And I mean, the one thing I agree with Mr. Humphrey on is that this, this project has moved forward quickly. And the sooner it gets done, the sooner the whole site is stabilized. I mean, part of the problem with Stormwater runoff, when he was in the construction phase on the northerly side, was that you had areas that weren't stabilized yet and didn't have siltation controls in place to, one, slow down the water and also capture and contain the silt there. So again, but I appreciate that people are concerned about water in the grades.
What would be the to-do for Beta to do now? I mean...
I would have them, I think, talking this through, I think I would have them review the plan.
This plan?
Yep. And comment, because they would compare it to the plan that was approved and the stormwater design. And they could provide a comment on, "No, I think this is fine. This is not going to cause a problem." Or they might say, "Yeah, we think that some measures might need to be taken" and what they might recommend. And we could have them go out and visit the site.
Could Lot 4 be accepted tonight, guys?
Mr. Humphries? Mr. Humphries, the board is kind of discussing here. So you'll just give us just one moment. I did want to ask board members if they had any thoughts about what Stephanie had suggested. But I appreciate your comments. Thank you, Mr. Humphries.
I feel like we wouldn't be doing our due diligence if we didn't have Beta look at the plan. I appreciate and value Mr. Humphries' work. And I do trust that, like with all the other buildings that he's put up in town, he tries to make them as best as they possibly can be. But given the public comments tonight, I do feel like having that Beta review is just a part of our doing our due diligence on the project. So I would rather have their feedback on the plan to be able to then make a decision. I don't know, Stephanie, if we ever do, you know, if we can move meetings or add meetings or do special meetings to try and expedite this for Mr. Humphrey. That's kind of a separate issue, but that's where I stand.
Yeah, and we can talk about that at the chair's discretion, but that's always up to the board.
I think that's a possibility. I think we all want to help Mr. Humphries kind of move this forward as fast as possible while being as responsive as possible to the concerns that folks have raised. So if that is a possibility, do I have a motion? This is for, we're doing for Lot 1 and Lot 4 separately, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so for, just for Lot 1 right now, do I have any motions based on what was discussed?
So we have a motion, a motion for Lot 1 to have the plans reviewed by Beta and have them go to the site as well. At which time then, when we have further information, we could
Yes.
Add an additional meeting. So motion to have Beta review plans and do a site dissection.
Second? For Lot 1?
For Lot 1. Lot 1.
Any other comment from the board? All right, same, none.
Aye.
Do I have a motion for Lot 4?
Can I say anything about Lot 4? The foundation height's the same as Lot 3 and Lot 5. They're all the same. Here, is this Lot 4?
Either. And it is a, it is a plan previously, it is a building that has been previously approved, correct?
Correct.
All right, do I have a motion for Lot 4?
A motion to approve Lot 4 as presented?
Kathy is struggling with her microphone. It just collapsed.
You can use...
Second?
Alan, if he wants to share.
All right.
Okay. Sorry.
All in favor? Kit?
Aye.
Weeks?
Aye.
Zygmunt?
Aye.
And Wolf is an a as well. Thank you, Mr. Humphries, for your time. Oh, sorry, Stephanie.
Well, no, Mr. Humph, but before, before we move forward, does the board want to contemplate? I mean, this could be a Zoom meeting. We just need 48 hours to post the meeting.
I would definitely be in favor of a Zoom meeting to kind of continue to...
I think it would be, so we'd need to get in touch with Beta first and find out how quickly they could get this done. It might be that the 16th would be the earliest anyway. But it looks like I have, I have a meeting at 6 o'clock on the 9th, which is the Monday, but probably any other time. Do we want to set something or just, I can coordinate? We can coordinate with you folks, with the board? Okay.
All right. All right, thank you for your time, Mr. Humphries. We'll be in touch if we send the special, the special panel in the board meeting.
So is Lot 4 approved?
Lot 4 has been approved.
So can I just ask a silly question? How do I ask for extension on the road because I'm going to need it? So I'm not going to finish the road till probably July now, so how do I ask for an extension? Because I'm not going to be able to put the foundation in on Lot 1 this year. So do I do that at a meeting? What do I do?
The road is well under construction unless Mr. Humphrey was thinking he'd be another year or more out, I think the...
I think that's it. We can table that question for right now?
Yeah, because I need to know, because I wanted to finish the road this May, but I'm not going to be able to do it till the fall now, so...
That, so why don't you bring, we're going to talk about having a special board meeting for this, and we can chat more about it then.
Okay. All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
All right.
All right.
Thank you. Next up is the internally illuminated sign at 41 Robert Drive. This is the Target drive-up parking signs. Do we have someone to present?
No, I was just going to fill this still up on it.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you. If you could just please introduce yourself.
Sure, my name is John Morrison, and I own Connecticut Sign Service.
Thank you. The floor is yours.
All right. I think you can see me now. So I've got, how do I do a screen? I've got new options here.
You should see up at the top of your screen a share button, a green share button.
Is it like a badge?
No, it's, it's... It's like a tab, a green tab at the top of the screen or at the bottom of the screen.
Oh, there you go. It says someone else is sharing. I'll send you the request. Something came up that says Bird Dog. I'm not sure what that is. Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so there's, at this site, and actually, I've got a picture I wanted to show you guys, which I think... Can you see that? It's a lit Target sign for the CVS Pharmacy in the background?
No.
Oh. How about now?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry about that. All right, so this site has got, they refer to it as 18 stalls. So that means there's nine, can you see my cursor on this sign here?
Yes.
Okay, so there's nine of these signs. This is sign 1. On the opposite side of it, it says number 1. On this side, it says number 2. That parking space is about 10 feet wide. They're oversized. And then there's about a six-foot aisle, kind of like a handicap parking space would have, so that each of the vehicles that's parked at the customer pickup area has plenty of room to open doors and close doors. I don't know if you've experienced the drive-up shopping at Target. It is remarkably busy. I was never interested in that kind of customer service, but if you buy something on the Target app and pull into the driveway, you're literally, they bring the stuff out and they literally put it in your car, and you're on your way out of there. There's a lot of traffic coming in and out of these drive-up stalls. It turns over a lot. So what we have here is there's nine of these signs. They're numbered, 1 and 2 is the first one, and the last one is 17 and 18. They'll span probably 90 feet of one of the rows, you know, starting at this island, moving out. This is a different site. This is Warwick Island that we did recently. When I spoke to Suzanne today, she'd asked me if I could provide a picture. So when you're looking at the drawing, which I think you guys have, and I'll go back to in a moment, this is the actual drive-up. They call it a beacon sign. And the red part of this sign is 12 inches wide, right? So from here to here, each face is 12 inches. It's square. And this is eight feet tall, from the very top of this white little rectangle here to the very bottom of the sign. And then this cement base that it's on, which is like a light pole base, is two feet tall and 18 inches in diameter. There's a, this panel here, that's the underside of a solar panel. So the other side of that is one of those black solar panels aimed in the direction of the sun. Inside this thing is a battery that looks like a car battery. It's a little bit smaller to fit within the 12-inch width. There's a time clock, there's a, like a breaker like you would have in a home, but it's for a 12-volt system, similar to a car or like a marine application. And so this solar panel charges the battery all day. And then at night, they have these, they have a set of these timers so that this can come on. It'll come on at 5:00 PM if it's dark. If it's still light, it doesn't come on until it gets dark out. And they turn off at 10:00 PM. So the, some of the Target stores are open later than 10:00, but they have it set so that the, the customer pickup stops serving at 10:00, and these lights go out at 10:00. If I close this window, do you, anybody have any questions about this structure? I can't hear you guys. I'm hoping you can still hear me.
Yeah, we can hear you fine.
Okay.
Not hearing any questions, so proceed.
I'm going to close that window.
I have one question on the illuminated signs is, how many are there and where are they? I can't quite see the, the plan on the next page.
Sure, there are two of them. There's one at each end of the field. And I'll scroll down here. There should be a site plan in here. Don't have a layout for that here.
There's one on our packet. I just can't read it very easily.
So there's, there's two. Basically, there's one column, like in that picture that I showed you, at the island that's closest to the building. And then when you move out, you've got nine parking spaces. That's 90 feet. And you're going to have eight of those six-foot paths. So I'm going to say roughly 150 feet out from that first island is where the customer pickup area will end, and there'd be another one of these beacons. And these are by design because, can you see this page now? Okay. So they're really set up so that when you pull in the parking lot, you can see above the height of the cars, this top portion here, which is 2 feet 8 inches. It's like 34 inches. Actually, it's bigger than that because of the top portion here. So from the top of this little automobile icon down to here, so four feet of it is illuminated. And that four feet with the, with the height of this portion, so it's from, from eight feet in the air to 12 feet in the air is where this little 12-inch-wide, four-foot-tall lit-up portion is. And there's one at each end of the, of the customer pickup stalls, so you can kind of pull in the parking lot. Again, because of how much traffic there is to these 18 parking spaces, the intent is to, is to have people, when they first come in the parking lot, see where the customer pickup area is and hopefully not have all that traffic go back and forth in front of the main entrance to the store.
Okay, thanks. So there's two of these, and they bookend the spots?
That's correct.
Got it.
And the, and the entire customer pickup area is in one aisle, if you will, of parking in front of the store. It's usually several aisles off-center from the main store entrance. I'm looking to see if I have another PDF that has that, that site plan, if you'd like to see it.
Well, thank you for the presentation. Stephanie, do you have any additional comments or questions?
No. You and I talked about this, I mean, the, and it was explained why the height, they're, they're quite tall signs. 12 feet.
Yeah, I mean, it seems to me that the, the explanation as a beacon sort of answered my question.
Yeah.
I think the issue from, from the board's perspective is primarily whether or not this is, you know, for directional purposes. Because I, you know, I think if we determine that this is sort of a secondary sign used for directional purposes, as it's kind of been explained, I, you know, I, I don't see any issues at all from a bylaw, from a bylaw perspective. So that, that's kind of what I'm, what I'm seeing and hearing. And it's just two of them. I'll, I'll admit, when I first looked at it, I thought it was all, I thought these were all internally illuminated, so. But I don't know. Board members, what do you guys think? Comments, questions, motions?
I, I think it improves the, the safety and visibility of people coming in the lot that are looking for these spots, so.
Yep. Well, feel free to make a motion.
Um, I'll, oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Joanna. I've been doing it all night.
Um, I'd like to make an motion to approve the Target signs for forty-one Robert Drive.
Second, Kid.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Kid?
Aye.
Weeks?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Ziggman?
Aye.
And Stetson is an aye as well. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Okay, uh, next up is a continued public hearing at 531 Foundry Street. Hammerhead and Gary Bynneke.
Good evening. We're gonna have the engineer do his presentation if you would.
So I brought the board. Do you want me to put it up or do you just want to put a plan up on the screen?
I don't have a way to put a, the plan on this screen.
Oh, there's a question.
Okay, so. Well, is it all, is it all set up?
It should be. I'll just do share. You know where it is, right?
Uh, good evening. Uh, my name's Peter Lavoy. I work for Landmark Site Design. I am the engineer on the project. So since the last meeting that we had, um, I've done a couple things. Um, the first thing is, uh, the peer review requested some additional fieldwork. Uh, so I went out there and did a survey and we did the additional fieldwork and added that to the plan set. Also, at the last meeting, there was a comment regarding the landscaping. So I had the landscape architect call the town and talk to, I think, Stephanie, uh, regarding the plantings. So he talked and he made changes for, uh, the concerns that were at the last planning board meeting, and that's what, uh, so he, he changed, uh, the plants, uh, that he was proposing. So he, I guess he added more common plants in the area. Uh, I think a hundred percent of the plants are common to, um, the area, uh, for Eastern. So, and then the second thing, uh, I've been working with the peer review on the drainage. So I did make changes to the drainage, if you want to go to the grading plan. Right, go up. Yeah, that one, yep. So, uh, the major concern was I had a, uh, open basin adjacent to the property line. And he, because it was an infiltration basin, he wanted it ten feet away from the property line. So what I did is I, um, condensed, uh, there was a underground basin adjacent to the existing structure that collected the roof runoff from that existing structure. I removed the open basin that was on the right side of the property and combined that into an over, a larger underground basin. And then what you see is I have a catch basin that will collect the runoff directed into the underground basin, and then there's a small outlet control structure, which is a drain manhole that discharges into that settling pond. So the settling pond is kind of to create a sheet flow, uh, off the site. So all the runoff will go into the underground basin, but the discharge will go into that little settling pond, fill up to a certain elevation, and then sheet flow through that riprap area to kind of create a sheet flow instead of a concentrated. If you put a pipe there, it would be more of a concentrated, uh, flow. So that will give, uh, um, a sheet flow, uh, that I think would meet the requirement that he was suggesting. He had made a comment regarding discharge onto the abutting property. Also, I made changes to the, to the drainage areas that he had requested because of the additional fieldwork that he wanted me to do. So my drainage report has been updated, um, for that. Uh, I, also I incorporated my total suspended solids. There were some additional calculations he wanted me to, to add to the stormwater report, which I did. Um, I did email him today, tried to see what he was thinking, uh, for a, you know, uh, for the third review. Uh, and he said that he wouldn't, he didn't, or he wasn't going to have the review ready for today, so. Um, I'm still waiting to hear back from what I had submitted to him. Those are the, the three major changes. The last one, um, we looked at the parking requirements. And for a multifamily, uh, development, you need one point two five units per, one point two five, uh, parking spaces per unit. So that comes out to six point two five spaces that would be required. Uh, we, but we have added, uh, we have a total number of fourteen. So we meet that requirement, uh, and we also, that was because one of the questions were, um, visitor parking. Uh, so we did, um, add those visitor parking. So that's, that's basically the changes to the plan. Still waiting to hear back from the peer review on the drainage.
Thank you. Stephanie?
So, um, a few things. So I think that we just got the revised plans late last week.
Correct.
And the peer reviewer has had a chance to take a quick look at it and knows that it will take a little more time to do that. So I had talked with Aaron about that earlier today. The, uh, one of the things, the applicant did, uh, provide a photometric plan, which was not included with the original submission. It shows that the, um, it shows the location of the exterior lighting and demonstrates that there's a zero-to-minimus light cast onto adjacent properties. I did take a look at the landscaping plan and it shows a mix of native species with some non-native or hybrid species, and the plant materials should all be native species. Uh, let's see, they revised the elevation, as I understand it from talking and reviewing the elevation plans, they've revised the elevations, um, which originally showed a farmer's porch, and now they're showing columned awning entrances over the doorways. Um, and the applicant indicated that this change would, um, was made because they realized the farmer's porch would reduce the amount of backyard space and they wanted to have as much backyard space as possible. And then I also mentioned that during the initial meeting, abutters raised concerns about noise during dumpster pickup operations. So when the board, um, if the board does recommend an approval, um, they should consider restricting the hours, um, the dumpster can be emptied. And I, again, I talked with the peer reviewer and he did mention, just again, because of the holidays, um, that he would not have a chance to review that. Probably this week, but we'll try to get to it as soon as possible.
Thank you, Stephanie. Uh, this, this question is to the engineer. How much, how much space did you pick up by removing the farmer's porch?
If I could.
Aaron.
If you don't mind, Aaron Waluka. Um, it's not that we picked up space. We would have had to slide the building back eight feet in order to make the farmer's porch work properly with the roof of the covered deck that's being created at the back of the existing building. And that eight feet, um, if you, oh, I'm pointing at the computer. You can't see that. Uh, if you look on the plan that we have up there, this, it's moving real slow, isn't it? Okay. This area here is the wooded area. We're hoping, where there are trees. We're hoping to leave those. If we brought the building back eight feet, it was gonna make that significantly smaller.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I, I think, I think what you're saying makes perfect sense. I wa, I was just curious. I, I didn't realize that it would require such significant re-engineering to make the, the farmer's porch. It was just the first time I had heard of that, so that's, that was why I asked the question. But I, I think it makes sense. I think it still looks nice and.
Thank you.
You know, so I, you know, good job there. Board members? All right. Um. If there are no questions by board members, any members of the public?
Nope.
None? All right, um, well, you know, I, I hate, hate to do this to you guys, but I think, you know, we're probably gonna have to wait until the next hearing just to get the thumbs up from the peer reviewer. And then hopefully we'll just, it'll be a quick in and out for you guys, seeing that, you know, we don't have any additional comments for you tonight. You know? I think that's, Stephanie, do you agree that that makes the most sense? So just wait until this meeting?
Yep.
All right, so board members, I will, uh, accept a motion.
Motion to continue at 531 Foundry Street to the seventeenth of September?
Second, Ziggman?
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Wolf?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
Weeks?
Aye.
Ziggman?
Aye.
And Stetson's an aye as well. We'll see you guys in a couple of weeks.
Thank you very much. Your time.
Thank you. Okay. Next up is the A&R Plan for seventy-seven R, King Arthur Road?
You have, no, it's six ninety Depot Street.
Yeah, did I skip over somebody? I'm so sorry.
Right, you're, you're solely, right?
All right, I'll take it back. We are, we are on, we are on six ninety Depot Street. Phillips Edison and Company, Solely Engineering.
Okay. I'll try to keep it as brief as possible. I'll let you guys ask if more questions. I know it's been a long meeting. Um, for the record, my name's Sam Alfanti, Registered Professional Engineer, uh, in the Commonwealth. I'm here with Solely Engineering. Our offices are in Norwood, Mass. We're the Site Civil and Traffic Engineer for the project. Um, we're here representing the applicant, Phillips Edison and Company, um, for the proposed two thousand three hundred and twenty-five square-foot Chipotle restaurant um, as an out parcel at the Shaw's Plaza at six ninety Depot Street. Um, and with me, I believe on is the architecture team. I believe there's someone from Chipotle as well. Um, and I believe Quinn is on as the applicant. I think I'm gonna handle the presentation, but if there are questions that need to be directed to them, um, you can certainly take a better suit some of the, some of the questions.
Suzanne, you can promote them as panelists.
So I'll, I'll continue. I'm sure you guys are all familiar with the site, but, um, we're proposing a, just under a point nine acre site lot, um, as an out parcel to the existing six ninety Depot Street parcel, which is a twenty point eight four acre parcel. The site is boarded by Depot Street to the west and it's surrounded by commercial property. Um, the Dunkin' Donuts to the south and then the Shaw's Plaza to the east. The site's just northeast of the Foundry Street and Depot Street, um, intersection. Uh, in existing conditions, the site is currently, um, a grass island out in front of the Shaw's parking field. Um, a portion of the site does encroach into the, the main drive aisle of the Shaw's Plaza as well as the parking field. And the reason why we are, the project is proposed, you'll see in a minute, about seventy feet off of Depot Street as opposed to kind of, uh, closer to the road. There is an existing leaching field, um, for the Burger King restaurant, which is right along Depot Street. You can see it um, in the existing conditions plan right here. So through an easement, Burger King actually conveys their, their affluent to the Shaw's Plaza property. Um, and that's where the leaching field exists. Um, it is still in conformance with Title V. Um, there's not a need to, to take that out at this time, although town, um, I know has made comments that they would support that. Um, but that is currently owned by the Burger King and it's not part of this application. So for the site layout, uh, as I mentioned, it's two thousand three hundred and twenty-five square-foot, um, slab-on-grade fast casual restaurant. Um, there is a lease agreement in place to be occupied by Chipotle Mexican Grill. Um, the site proposes twenty-three parking spaces, a drive-up window, an associated bypass lane, a masonry dumpster, um, enclosure, and an associate outdoor dining patio area, um, which will obviously be seasonal too. Um, this project was before the zoning board of appeals on November twelfth and received approval for the drive-up, uh, drive-through component as well as the outdoor dining, um, component of the project. As I've mentioned, um, it, it's, we, we have not submitted a formal A&R. Um, there's a, there's a, you can kind of see them here by the, the dash lines. There's a slew of easements. Um, access easements, drainage easements, the sanitary easement that, um, the applicant's legal team is kind of working through a, a formal A&R. We, I just got comments back from the project lawyer, um, regarding the A&R, so we're hoping to get that before the next meeting, so it will be kind of all approved at the same time and endorsed. But this is the, the proposed parcel at the time of submission. Um, it's just under a point nine acres. So I can go through some of the site elements of the Chipotle. So we're proposing to maintain the main access off Depot Street for access and egress into the parcel. Um, as I mentioned, the easement, the access easement will be relocated to the proposed main drive aisle, um, which is gonna be a little bit further south than where, or, excuse me, east, I guess, planned south. Um, to where the existing main drive aisle is in Shaw's. The site includes a mobile pickup window, which is, um, it's unlike other fast food drive-through configurations. Um, it's strictly for mobile orders and pickup. Uh, it doesn't include a pre-menu board, order point, or any payment transactions at the window, so it's a very quick, fast-paced. I, I believe a lot of the, um, orders are, are through delivery services as well, like Grubhub and, and Uber Eats and stuff like that. Um, or services like that, I should say. Um, there are two pull-in parking spaces, kind of on the planned west top, top, um, left of the screen. Those two spaces are gonna be utilized if there's an order that's not quite ready. When the person gets to the window, they'll be asked to pull around to the first or second space to just accelerate the process of, and the operational process. And then there's tenant wayf, wayfinding, pavement markings, um, proposed throughout as well as signage proposed throughout, um, which helps customers kind of gain a knowledge of the site and where to go for those mobile order pickup. Um, a full traffic analysis and traffic report was submitted with this project. Um, we analyzed three intersections. It was the Shaw's site driveway at Depot Street, the Foundry Street and Depot Street intersection. Bay Road was included in that analysis. And then, um, the Shaw's driveway on Foundry Street. Um, the traffic study concluded that the development would not provide a detrimental impact to the existing roadway network, uh, with minimal increases in delay and no accident patterns that were observed in the, in the, um, study area. And with no geometric issues, the study concluded that development could be accommodated with the existing, uh, infrastructure. There were two degradations in, in level of service. Um, they were very minimal and, and Stephanie, um, identified those in her staff review. I think it was a point six second delay and a point eight, but it, it triggered over that fifty-five second, which dropped it from a D to an E, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, the restaurants required to have nineteen parking spaces based on the proposal. It's a net reduction in the overall property. In existing conditions, the Shaw's has five hundred and ninety parking spaces, which is a surplus of three hundred and seventy from the, the zoning regulations. So there's definitely not an issue on parking here. A sidewalk is proposed that is going to connect the Depot Street existing sidewalk along the frontage and connect it to the Chipotle through that crosswalk in the rear, crossing the drive-through as well as the, um, the dumpster pad. Now, the reason why that's not, it's not an ideal layout, but due to the existing leaching field out front, it's kind of the only location that works to, to provide that pedestrian The, the site's been designed in conformance with the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook. We are proposing an infiltration basin. The infiltration basin is going to be located technically off the parcel, and it will be covered through an easement, so they will have the rights to drain onto that parcel and then through the Shaw's parcel. But it is designed with adequate capacity as well as, I think, greater than four thousand cubic feet of recharge volume. We did three test pits on-site back in October, and the, the underlay soils is sandy loam soils that are permeable, so we don't have an issue with, with stormwater or recharge on the site. Obviously, it's an increase in impervious area that largely in existing conditions that is grass for the most part. The utility plan, we are proposing a fifteen hundred gallon grease trap. The sewer is going to connect into the municipal sewer within Depot Street. We are going to tap the water main within Depot Street, and then we're going to pull primary electric and natural gas from the mains or services within Depot Street. I know the town engineer and DPW, we will be going before the sewer commissioner board through that permit process for, to receive allocation for that. That was one of his comments through the, the portal as well. We are proposing a, a landscape plan, and it is compliant, it is compliant with the zoning ordinance. We believe it proposes three sweet gum trees, rhododendrum shrubs, a variety of native grasses and perennials. The grass area is supposed to be seeded with a sun and shade mix, and the infiltration basin is proposed to be seeded with a New England wet mix. The project does propose the removal of, and this is a comment I saw in the staff review, but these three trees that are, kind of hug the Dunkin' Donuts in the proposed parcel line, they're, they're pretty large trees. I think there's six or seven of them existing. The first three are proposed to be cut down. The main reason for that is visibility. They really, if you're driving, I guess it'd be north on Depot Street coming from the intersection, the visibility of the signage as well as the proposed restaurant is really severely impacted by those three existing trees. So we are proposing to cut those three down. The rest of them are island trees within the Shaw's as well as shrubs and, and just normal ground cover for a shopping plaza. A photometric plan was submitted. We are proposing several poles, wall packs, LED, full dark sky compliant, full cutoff. There was a comment in the staff review comments that said that there wasn't cut sheets associated with them, but they are shown on the plan, the fixtures that we are proposing as well as the, the model numbers. They are LED dark sky compliant fixtures. There is a, some light spillage over the property lines. In the location of the northern and eastern property lines, it's a, obviously, it's going to be, currently, it's going to be owned by the same company. Obviously, that could change in the future, but with it being a commercial plaza, we, we felt that that was something that was kind of prudent and, and was viewed as a positive to help light that main drive aisle as well as the, the main access egress through the I do have some architectural renderings and a shelf floor plan for the development. I'll kind of buzz through this quickly. There, it's a prototypical Chipotle restaurant, and the materials and colors will conform to their prototypical guidelines. If there are any other questions pertaining to the architectural thought, I will ask the architect for the project to kind of speak on it. But the floor plan is a thirty-three plus or minus by sixty-six foot building. Then I'll open it up to, to the planning board. Any questions? I'm not sure what's, there, there is, there was a snow storage figure submitted. That was a staff review comment as well. It was figure six in the stormwater report. It might have got missed. It was kind of varied, I suppose, but we did submit it. There's ample landscaped islands on the property to, to accommodate a thirty-plus inch storm, snowstorm. So I did want to bring that up. But I haven't answered any comments or questions you guys might have or?
Well, thank you very much for the presentation. Stephanie, any comments or questions?
Uh, no. I mean, the one, the plant material was shown to be native, but they're not true native species. They were varietals, and they should be true native species. I did suggest that a bike rack be provided. We have a lot of people who bicycle in Eastern and try to accommodate them. Yes, I would not have seen the stormwater. I, I generally don't read the stormwater report. We read that. And then, as Sam pointed out, I did, I thought it was important to kind of break down the key points of the traffic report in the, in my staff report, so the board could see exactly what the increased delay would be, which is, appears to me to be minimal. And I think that's, that's it.
All right. And in, in that, in this scenario with where the traffic impact is, does appear to be so minimal, we wouldn't typically send that out for peer review, right?
I don't think so. I, I mean, I wouldn't.
I mean, especially where the entrance is. I mean, intuitively, it's not going to have a tremendous impact. I mean, the location of it's.
Right. People will be moving in and out of that, and, I mean, people exiting even, even if they're taking a left, which people normally do, out of that plaza. You know, it's staged by the traffic light timing.
Well, and the, and the, the entrance and exit is off of the road. It's only inside.
Yeah, there, right, there, yes.
All right. Board members?
I think I just had a quick question about the trees and the visibility from the road, just because the sign, the Chipotle sign is going to be on that large Shaw's sign, correct?
It's not, no.
It's not?
Yeah. I can go back to the site elements. I think that was helpful to. So there, there's a separate pylon sign proposed on the, the Chipotle parcel. It's up in the.
Okay, I see.
Oh, there it is.
So why do you not have the sign as part of the bigger plaza signs?
I'm sorry, what?
Why wouldn't you have your sign with the, the bigger plaza sign?
I would, I could have the applicant state that, but my experience, national tenants want their own pylon sign. In the event that they were ever to sell, there's no really, if that, if the Shaw's Plaza were to sell in X amount of years or whatever and re-get redeveloped, to have your sign be dependent on another commercial property, I think there's, that's the reason. Quinn, if you'd like to, to speak up.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Sam. My, my name's Quinn Gatto. I'm with Phillips Edison and Company, is the owners of the shopping center. So to address that question, the existing monument sign or pylon sign that services Shaw's Plaza is full with our existing tenant lineup. So rather than, uh, uh, make significant modifications to that existing sign, since we're moving forward with the subdivision process, and since this Chipotle building sits back a little bit further, we wanted to make sure that we were able to identify the individual Chipotle parcel with a monument sign that, that was closer to the actual building in and of itself, an announcement sign prior to that turn into the shopping center right on the parcel. So that, that was one of the reasons why we were proposing the monument sign, just because that building sits back as well as the existing center sign being full. And to Sam's point, you know, if there was ever a sale in the future, and these are individual lots, we would want to make sure that that signage would remain with the existing building. Does that address your question?
Mostly, I just, it's the loss of the three trees just for the sign that's kind of.
So it's not just for the sign, if I could speak on that. It's more for the visibility of the restaurant. If we could go to the renderings.
And I can actually do a, I have Google Maps pulled up as well, too, if, if that would be helpful. I could share my screen on that.
So the, the front of the building also is facing Depot Street. So although the parking is on the side and the, the doors to access the building are going to be on the, I think that's the southern facade. The prototype for Chipotle is actually the skinnier side facing Depot Street to be the front. It's kind of a modified layout for this. I'm not sure if you've been to the one in Hanover, but there's a very similar prototype that was just constructed in Hanover. And, yeah, the front of the building is, is the glass facade on the front, and that's visibility, what they're looking for.
Can, can I share Google Maps as well? Can I share my screen?
Yeah, that would.
All right, let's see. Let me know if you can see the Google Map screen.
Yes.
Okay. So thi- this, uh, this is a view essentially a- as you cross from the main intersection towards the Shaw's Plaza Shopping Center. Here's the Dunkin' Donuts. These, these trees here, and I'll get closer, but these trees here right across the street from CVS are the ones specifically in question. So as you can see, they're, they're very large, right up against the power lines, but they, primarily, you can't see that lot until you get substantially closer. So, you know, these, these overgrown trees, the intention would be, in essence, to, to remove the first three. There's another, as Sam mentioned, there's another four that would remain, but, but I think that that would clear up things nicely here, and we are plan, planning on going back and planting new trees as well associated with this development. But in general, just the approach here was to increase visibility to both the building, you know, put that signage up front since we're sitting back further, and, and really just set this pad up for as much success as we possibly can with the existing conditions.
And if I could also, when we came for a pre-application meeting, which was sometime in the spring, maybe?
It was a while ago.
Yeah, quite a bit of time. The initial plan had the building right up basically against the roadway, and removing those trees wasn't part of the plan. But when we were forced to kind of maintain the leaching field and, and pull the building far off the road, that was, visibility was a concern from the tenant. So increasing that, as Quinn said, is, is the goal.
And I know this, I don't see the landscape plan in the binder, so you could see what the new plantings were.
I'll stop sharing.
I have the landscape.
Because I believe there were some shade trees, right, where there's some red maples that were being proposed.
There are. So the, the only trees that are proposed at this time are three sweet gums on.
Oh, that's right, the sweet gums.
Along the driveway, or the, the main driveway. I think if the board was, was open to, if you were looking for kind of a replacement, we could certainly look at that. I will say that along the roadway is very tight because of the utilities that exist. But I think there's certainly locations on the property we could increase the trees to alleviate that concern.
Because you're eliminating two, those are two trees on the northeast side, well, kind of in the middle.
Coming down the driveway.
Right.
What do we think, members?
Did you put trees on the islands? I can't tell from my screen whether, there's little marks on two of the islands.
So those are, those are relocated light poles, but there's no trees proposed at this time in any of the islands.
Other board members agree? I don't know. I feel like that's a good place always to put them as well, too. It helps with the, the heat effect of all the concrete as well.
I think we would be, we'd be open to, if you, if the board was looking for that, we could increase the tree count on the proposed landscaping, if that's in lieu of the removal of the three.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's the feedback that the guys are getting. And so Stephanie, how, how long do, do we expect for Strong Point to take with the stormwater review?
They, they get things turned around pretty quickly. We just sent it them last week, and again, this week is the holiday, but he didn't indicate that it was, I, I didn't get a response that because of the holidays it was going to take longer, so.
Okay.
I mean, definitely, I expect that we'll have a response be, well before the seventeenth.
All right.
I have a few other questions, yeah? Chair, come in.
Yes, please.
So I wanted to ask, is there going to be any shade on the patios? Are you guys going to put like umbrellas on the tables?
I don't know the answer to that question. It, it appears by the rendering there, there are umbrellas on the tables or standalone umbrellas, but if the Maya's on, she's the architect for this project, she might be able to speak on that.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is Keith Betancourt from BKA. All right, here, I'll pop my video on real quick. Maya's listening in. She wasn't added as a, as a panelist, but I can answer that. Yeah, there will be, there will be black umbrellas on the patio at, they kind of inter, interweave in every other table, so there'll be, there'll be adequate shade there.
Some shade, great.
Thanks.
And I wanted, oh, sorry, and I also wanted to ask about, so I just lost the page, but on the plan, it looks like pedestrians who are coming off of Depot Street have to walk around the building, following the sidewalk in order to access through a crosswalk the actual entrance to the building. So what I'm wondering is, myself as a pedestrian, I would cheat that system and I would just cut across either where your septic area is or, you know, off by the curb at that corner or something, and just cut through your drive-through lane and try and access the building around the patio area. I'm assuming there aren't any barriers to kind of prevent that from happening, and I didn't see any of those on the plan. And if you could talk a little bit about why there isn't a pedestrian access that direction, like the closest way from the entrance from the street?
Yeah, sure. So there is an existing sidewalk. I think it's on the southern side of where we're proposing the proposed sidewalk. There is an existing sidewalk. It's a asphalt sidewalk that connects to Depot Street. So we're proposing a continuation of that to kind of the rear of the parcel. To answer your question about the, the, I guess, the more straight line path, I, I spoke to it briefly earlier, but the existing leaching field is, is kind of hindering that, as well as we don't want to direct pedestrians kind of through the, the pickup window point of transaction. This, as I mentioned, the site, or the building's been designed, the, the main entrance is actually on the left side of the building, not, not the front. And there's really no connectivity, there's no sidewalk over there. It's, you'd be walking kind of through the drive-through lane or drive-up lane, and the patio also has a fence around it, so there's no, you'd really have to walk the entire drive-up lane and then back to the front door. It's not really a, a straight line path, although it looks like it on the plan. But there is a slight grade change as well between the driveway, the main driveway and the drive-up lane. It's about a foot and a half, two feet difference. So there is a slight grade change that it does slope down. I'm not saying that would prevent anyone from crossing that, but it does kind of prevent the, the slopes of the sidewalk to, to be conducive for.
Yeah, to, just to echo Sam's comments there, you know, we're, we're obligated that any, any side- any, any sidewalk that we put into place here be ADA compliant, and we want to make sure that we abide by that. And so the, the slopes that Sam alluded to would prevent us from being able to essentially place the sidewalk in any other manner and still remain ADA compliant. So we want to be mindful of that when it comes to any of our site designs here.
Okay, so maybe when you guys return, just have a think about, I don't know if there's anything you could do with landscaping, or perhaps like stonewall or whatever, to try and dissuade people from cutting through on the other side of the building where you don't want them. Not seeing the grading in person, it's always hard for me to judge that on just a paper level, but I do, I do have some concern that near that drive-through window, people would just kind of cut through if they are walking there, and they wouldn't bother to go around the other side. And then similarly, my other question is, I frequent this plaza quite a bit, and I know that the main entrance and exit that's depicted here on the screen can sometimes get a little hairy when people pull in and pull out around that corner, not the Depot Street corner, but already pulled into the lot and around essentially this, yeah, right where your pointer is, like that area. People kind of whip around, and sometimes the parking, the folks who are coming out of the parking aisles have too close-for-comfort kind of interactions. So I don't know what the solution to that is, I don't know if that's a concern that other board members maybe have to share, but I'm wondering if maybe there could be like a, a hard angle instead of that sloped turn? I don't know how else to describe that, but basically square that off at that corner so that you have to stop and actually take a proper turn instead of just swing around real fast?
If I could speak to that, they, when we were in front of the zoning board last week or two weeks ago, that was a, a similar comment was made from a board member, and they requested that we, which hasn't been shown on the, on the plans, it was, you know, we already had submitted, but in the revised material, I did want to bring it up, they, they requested a stop bar and striping as well in this location where my cursor is. I, I believe in existing conditions, there is one now, and I think that's why it was put into place. The configuration we have is more of a, it's more conducive to force people to a right as opposed to just driving straight, there's kind of an island now, this, this island here. But it's not to say people aren't going to just bomb straight in like, like you're mentioning. I think a stop bar could certainly help. I don't know if the board had other questions or suggestions.
I actually have a question as well, to springboard off of what Joanne is saying. I'm concerned, because that, that parking lot has a divide in it, which you can see just under, under the, the first full little traffic island. And so if, if you're coming from Foundry, or did they have a blank, yeah, if you're coming in that way and you're driving past the Burger King coming up, you have to come all the way up, right opposite your entrance in and out of Chipotle to get down into the Shaw's parking, unless you swing around and want to take your chances with pedestrians in front of the store to come around. And so I guess it's more a question to the person who is on the call, who is representing the plaza ownership. Is there ever a plan to take out that break in the middle of the lot?
So with regards to that break, I have not seen any specific plan in terms of making modifications there. One thing that I'll say is that any modifications to the rest of the shopping center require us to get the approval of Shaw's. And so the concept plan for the Chipotle that we have in place has already been signed off on by Shaw's, but they, they are very stringent when it comes to any requirements or modifications to the rest of the, the, the shopping center. So I haven't seen anything proposed, but that's definitely something that I can talk with our property management team about and just try to better understand how traffic flow patterns typically occur there, and what if any resolution they, they, they've seen or, or thought through and, and spoken with Shaw's about. I just can't promise anything at this point.
People also use "cut through," they just straight up cut that corner and will cut through. I think your building is now coming out a little bit farther, but it looks like people will still be able to, to swing out off of Foundry and just cut, they blow the light, like, yeah.
Let's get that light in.
I, in, unfortunately, I think that's something that a lot of commercial plazas deal with, with a site like this that has access on two main roads. Obviously, that's not the intention of our development, but.
So I'm, I'm kind of thinking, and I could be all wrong on this, that you might, by the fact that you have that building there, it provides more of a calming effect, because now you've got barrier, you know, kind of visual barriers on both sides, well, or at least on the left side, but you'll have the islands on your right side.
But I still think navigating the parking lot is.
Yeah, I, I think you need to put in place that stop bar that you talked about, because you got people coming in from the top that are going to go left, and then you got people coming up here that want to swing through, and, and they're, they're set up for a natural collision without some stop sign, and there is one there now. It's almost like a three-way stop, I think.
Yeah.
Is it a stop sign or it's just a stop bar, like a painted bar?
It's a stop sign.
I think that stop sign is knocked down.
There is a stop and a yield though, yeah.
They used to be.
It's confusing, because there's yields from two different directions and stops for another direction.
I think it does, it does panic people, so everybody, I think, hits their brake, because they're not exactly sure what to do sometimes.
I think, I think, so in existing conditions, there's not, the only stop sign is the one we've kind of talked about. I think it could be helpful to alleviate this, this concern or, or the, the traffic patterns that exist. If we propose stop signs on the three or four islands here as well, so people coming out of those spines away from the Shaw's, kind of had a stop as well, because I'm sure people just roll through, and the stop sign obviously won't 100% prevent it, but most drivers will.
A visual cue.
Yeah.
Well, it was, it was a T, but now you've kind of popped it down, so you used to have cars that could see each other with stops.
Right.
But now you got this, so you got to worry about the people coming in from the top that are going to go more towards their left to go to Shaw's, and the people trying to squeeze out going across that flow.
Right, so I think if we put stop signs in basically every drive aisle, here, 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 the only one that has free flow would be the main access, I think that would, yeah. Now, certainly, that's not going to 100% prevent people rolling through stop signs, but it certainly could help.
Yeah, uh, Sam, I, I mean, I, I support that fully. One of the things that I'll say is, there, in existing conditions, there's essentially two drive aisles that, that go up towards that main entrance, and they're at the exact same distance away from the entrance. So if I, here, if I could share my screen once more. Let me know if you can see this.
Yep.
Yep, so essentially, right now, you have a stop sign here for any of the traffic coming from that drive aisle to the exit, and then a, a similar spaced, a stop sign here for, for additional traffic. If you're trying to exit and, you know, there's two cars there, in essence, you're trying to exit seemingly at the same time to go to the same point. With the modified plan, this island is actually set back a little bit further, so there's more of a spacing, and I think that'll, that'll help cut down a little bit on some of that, the intersection traffic there, but I, I support the additional signage to assist with traffic throughout the site here.
Yeah, and that, I was trying to word it correctly, but the, the way the main drive is oriented now, it does change the patterns, like, I think that visual was great, I wish I had it in my presentation, but it, it's, right now, it's just a T and kind of a C of pavement. This allows for a lot more restricted movements, while still being conducive to the, the tractor-trailers that visit the Shaw's and the other tenants onsite as well.
Did anyone do a crash request from the police department to see if there are actually a large number of crashes?
On-site?
Yeah.
I don't believe we, I know we did a crash for the mastie of the roadways, I don't know if the site was included in that. We can certainly reach out to the police department, because they would have those records. I can certainly do that, and we could bring those to you.
I mean, I, I don't know how specific the location might be, because it's within the plaza, but.
Right.
That might be just, just to see, because, you know, some, sometimes it, it seems scary, like Center Street and Main Street, but it really actually is very self-regulating.
I drive that every day. I see, I see so many people, I hear horns and see almost crashes daily, almost every day. It's more, I think, for the.
But I think, I think there's a low crash rate at that intersection, they've studied it in the past.
Do slow down, but there's a lot of anger.
Oh, yes, yes, there is. I was just at a conference, and they say you, 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 you know, you get the traffic that you designed for, and if you want to reduce speed, there, there are things you do that.
Yes.
Naturally cause people to slow down.
That would be one of the intersections where I find myself frequently yelling in the car, be predictable, not polite, because people being polite is what almost causes the accidents, so.
Yeah, you are true about that.
I will say, one of the, one of the things with this main drive aisle as well as with the proposal, I think more, more people will be going slower on that main drive to take a right or a left into the Chipotle, as opposed to just driving straight, because now there's going to be a pretty frequently, frequented site that is going to be popular in this area, so there will be traffic kind of taking a right and left as opposed to just driving straight through, so.
Okay, thank you for your presentation. So at this point, we're still waiting, we'd like to see some updates on the plans with some of the stop signals, and we'll wait for the stormwater report, and then we'll see you guys back on, I guess, or are you going to be ready to come back on the 17th, do you think?
As long as we receive the comments in the next week or so, I think we can, I, I don't anticipate the comments being major with the site, but you never know. But yeah, I think we can reevaluate when we get the comments and then let Stephanie know or Suzanne. But I think being on the 17th would work as well.
Right.
Do you know a motion to continue?
Yes, I do.
Motion to continue, 690 Depot Street, December 17th, 12.
Second kid.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Kid?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Weeks?
Aye.
Ziggman?
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well. See you guys in a couple of weeks.
Thank you very much, John.
Okay. Next up, I think this time, is 77, this is the A&R Plan at 77R King Arthur Road. Do we have anyone presenting? Great.
Hi, Greg Driscoll of JD Civil, representing the Camelot Estates Realty Trust for the A&R Plan at 77R King Arthur Road. I didn't bring a plan on the board, I don't know if you guys have it.
Do we, do you have it?
We have the Abda Mylar, we submitted that earlier today.
Do we not have it on the laptop?
I don't think we put it on the laptop, but I have it.
I can share it if you want me to.
Joanne, would you please?
Yep.
So Stephanie, you did have a comments regarding the current deed, and we did upload that to permanent access, did you see it?
No, I didn't have it uploaded.
Sorry.
Okay, no idea.
So just a brief overview, this landlocked parcel was, I guess, kind of left over from the developments of Camelot Estates. And recently, from what I understand, the land owner was looking to sell the property, and a developer was looking at it, the neighbors got wind of this, got together, pooled their resources, and they purchased the land themselves, and this is the result of them getting together, purchasing the land, and they want to then split it up amongst themselves based on the investment that they've all made into the property. And once this A&R is approved, they will then record the plan and then process out the, you know, the, the lots to the individual property owners that are part of the Realty Trust, and then probably dissolve the Realty Trust at that point. So that's kind of the purpose of the A&R, you know, neighbors got together, they prevented further development that they weren't going to be happy with in their neighborhood, and now split up the land amongst themselves, so. Guess it's a story of the butters working together.
All right.
Pulling together, so that's, that's the overview of what we're trying to do. Any questions?
Thank you for your presentation. Stephanie?
I, I can confirm what Greg just said, I started receiving calls about this parcel, I think in 2022, where the butters were very concerned, they thought this was permanent, permanently protected open space, it wasn't, it was a very early open space development, and a lot of those parcels at that time, they didn't actually either convey the land under the care and management of the Conservation Commission in the towns, or permanently protect them, or they would have a.
What was this, an association?
A conservation restrict, not, not like an official conservation restriction, but it would be deed restricted for a certain period of time and it expires.
Homeowners Association.
Right.
In common ownership.
Right, homeowner association is a way of keeping it permanently protected, so. You know, they, they were really looking to the town for solutions, and there wasn't a solution there, and I had talked with Mr. Smith, I'm not going to do justice to his last name, Spadnansky.
Yes.
And they, you know, it was something that was suggested, and they moved forward on it, so.
And there is one parcel on Beaver Dam that is not developed, that would have been a way into the property.
Yes, yep.
64, so.
Any questions from board members? I will accept a motion.
Motion to approve the A&R Plan for 77R King Arthur Road.
Second?
And, and again, it's motion to endorse?
Oh, sorry, motion to endorse the A&R Plan.
Three second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Wolf? Kid?
Aye.
Weeks?
Aye.
Ziggman?
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well. All right.
So the Mylar is here, can the members here tonight sign it, or would I come in later on?
If people, if we, we have three members, so that's the majority of the board.
Okay, yeah, if you guys could sign it tonight and I could bring with me, that'd be great.
All right. Thank you. All right, moving on.
Oh, yes.
We have a request to reduce surety at 345 Center Street, this is Good Speed Estates. Do we have anyone presenting on this, Stephanie?
No, and I, did I include the, yes, I did, so Suzanne included, I thought I'd put a memo together to the board. Basically, this is Good Speed Estates, they have completed the road and are just waiting for the grass strips to be seeded and grow and stabilize. So they are requesting a reduction in the surety that's being held, this is a bond, it's not cash, and they are asking that the, basically, it be reduced by $91,799, leaving $17,696, and that is sufficient for the remainder of the road. The prices that are reflected in this road cost estimate are current estimate, are current prices, so.
And that, and that also includes, that number includes some escalation as well.
Correct, yep.
Okay, any questions? Okay, any questions, board members? And so with this, with the, with this motion, typically, we identify the, the number that's being released, correct?
Yes.
The 91,799?
Yeah, I mean, it, it, either way, it could be what's to remain or what's being released.
Okay. Well, as long as it's identified, I'll make some promotion.
Motion to reduce the surety on 345 Center Street by $91,799, Wolf?
Second kid.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Wolf?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
Weeks?
Aye.
Ziggman?
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well. Okay. The, I feel like, did we just talk about the planning board's schedule at the last meeting?
We did, but everything was remote, and so I think we had some never.
Oh, that's right, okay.
That's right, I remember.
I guess I had forgotten that when I was looking through schedule. So what do we, does anyone have any additional comments on what's provided here? Thoughts? It looks fine to me.
Yep.
All right. Well, that's good, so that's resolved. Moving on to meeting minutes. Any motions?
Motion to accept the meeting list, October 1st, 2024, Wolf?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Wolf?
Aye.
Weeks?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
Ziggman?
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well. Just in terms of quick chair updates, I know that Kathy and Mickey know this, but our bylaws passed at the special town meeting last week overwhelmingly, so thank you all for your hard work in that regard. I think that's it from, for chair report. This has been a long meeting, so I don't want to go much further, but Stephanie, any, any director reports?
No, I don't have any today, any, any new information.
All right, then I will accept one final motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Wolf?
Aye.
Weeks?
Aye.
Kid? Ziggman?
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well. I hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving, and we'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving.
Have a good night.
Happy Thanksgiving.